Call the meeting to order. We'll note that Commissioner Altman is absent. All other commissioners are present. The first item of business is the order of business. Are there any changes to the order of business?
President Johnson, we'd like to remove item 4E, the KLJ Task Order Amendment. It most likely will appear on the next City Commission agenda.
Are there any other changes? Hearing none, would there be a motion to approve the order of business as changed?
I will so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. The motion carries. The next item then is the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda you wish to discuss? Not, would there be a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move.
Now, second?
We have the motion and the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We'll go to the non timetable agenda. Item 4A is some software. Mr. Kessel, any introductory comments?
Thank you, President Johnson. I'll keep it brief, but the Questica software, as we briefed you at the last City Commission meeting, is a budget software. It would be utilized in addition to our Great Plains software. It's an addition, it's not a replacement for. It doesn't do the accounting, it's simply budget software. We evaluated it amongst a couple other options, and the executive team was also included in that decision-making process, and it is our recommendation that we purchase and utilize Questica software for our budget processes here going forward.
Does this software integrate, though, with the existing accounting software?
Yes, it does. They've -- that was one of our major questions. They've done integration with Great Plains over three dozen times, and they are very, very confident that they can do this well for us, as they have with the rest of the integrations.
Are there other questions or comments? Well, last meeting, we didn't have a chance to read this, so I'm sure we all read it, and I guess I was, after reading it and knowing that it integrates with our accounting software, I'm okay with it, and I don't know about the rest of you, but...
Mr. President?
Mr. Steiner?
Mr. Kessel, were they able to honor the quote that they gave us? I think they wanted an answer from us before today.
They were, and that's a good question, Commissioner Steiner. They were able to honor that quote. They recognized that the delay in actually getting you the information was because of a delay in them getting it to me. So, they honored the quote, and the software cost is seventy, seventy thousand.
Okay, well, if you agree that this is a good thing, we'd be looking for a motion to approve the software contract. If you disagree, then the motion would be to not approve.
Mr. President?
Mr. Steiner?
Move we approve the software contract with Questica?
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have the motion and the second. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so the motion carries. We'll go to item B, and this is a memorandum of understanding and an easement issue, and Mr. Coling will introduce it.
Thank you, Mr. President and Commissioners. I have two documents for you related to the West Gravity Sewer Phase Two project. This is a project that would extend the sewer mains from basically Exit 59 up to 15th Street. The first item is memorandum of understanding. This property is owned by the State of North Dakota through the Research Extension Station, and this memorandum of understanding would provide the agreement of the city to purchase an easement for this sewer line on NDSU property, a Research Extension Service property. The total acreage of the easement is about four and a half acres, and the fee that NDSU has notified us of is $2,645. City staff would recommend approval of the memorandum of understanding and the easement. The easement document is also in your packets and is the actual conveyance document, which will convey that easement from NDSU to the City of Dickinson. Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Coling. You've heard his introduction and his recommendation. Are there any comments or questions? Not, is there a motion regarding the MOU?
I'll move we approve the MOU.
Chair, second?
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so the motion carries.
Mr. President, I don't have anything additional. As the NDSU easement, this would just be the actual conveyance document that would be signed by the parties and then recorded with county. City staff would recommend approval.
Is there a motion regarding the easement?
Move to approve, Mr. President.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have the motion and the second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Excuse me, item C is another easement issue. Mr. Coling will introduce this also.
Yes, Mr. President and Commissioners, this is also a public utility easement. This property is located just off of Broadway Street. This is a piece of property that the city owns, but as you know, we contract with Southwest Water Authority and the State Water Commission to operate the water treatment plant. There is an existing utility line that has gone across this property for some period of time, and as the finished water pumping station is under construction, we are noticing that there are some utility lines in that area that have never been appropriately documented as far as the easement granted between the city and the State Water Commission. So, this easement would rectify that situation and provide a properly documented easement for an existing water line in that area. There is no fee that we do charge for the granting of this easement. However, we are working with the State Water Commission on other matters, on the exchange of property and some other issues, so we believe that this one issue is something we can come to a resolution on fairly quickly. But city staff would recommend approval of this public utility easement. Be happy to take any questions if you have them.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Coling. You've heard his introduction. Are there any comments or questions? Not, is there a motion regarding this easement?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so the motion carries. This brings us to a right-of-way agreement regarding 21st Street West. Mr. Coling will also introduce this.
Mr. President, Commissioners, this right-of-way agreement is with Dickinson Energy Park LLC. Dickinson Energy Park owns a piece of property along 21st Street West, and this is the final parcel from which we need to acquire right-of-way in order to build 21st Street. We did obtain an appraisal of this property in order to value the right-of-way, and that appraisal came back at $28,695. Acquisition of this right-of-way is made for the full amount of the appraised value. City staff would recommend approval. Be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Coling. Again, you've heard his introduction and recommendation. Are there any comments or questions?
I'll move that we approve the right-of-way agreement for 21st Street. Second.
We have the motion and the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so the motion carries. Item E has been removed, so we go down to item F, and that's Finance Report. Mr. Kessel, anything you'd like to say about it?
Just a brief introduction. This was, as you know, we had been challenged in the accounting department, hence the delay in having this item on the agenda itself. We -- I just wanted to make comment that tax collections were strong, both from occupancy, hospitality, sales tax, and property tax perspective. I'd rather respond to questions if you have any, and let the report speak for itself.
Mr. Kessel, in the past, in March, we generally, we've received the financial report for January and February combined. Do you know when we're going to get the first financial report of this year?
I hope that we'll have that in April. The challenge, of course, we have is the Brady Mart's folks have, it's tax season, and they have gone back to doing taxes, so we are training our new staff members. We did hire an accountant, and so he's being trained, but I hope to have that available for you in April.
Would you be doing, do you think, the first three months then, the first quarter, or?
I'll have to have, you'll check that out. I'll have to check that out for you.
All right, are there any questions about the financial report? It appears to me that they made the correct entries and brought the funds that were negative into balance and the ones, you know, that were carrying too much money, and I mean, they made the appropriate transfers and eliminated the negative balances, with the exception of the street fund. And I guess I do have a question there, is do we have more monies that are due the street fund, or are we starting the year with the negative balance and other than our sales tax money that comes into there? We're not expecting a lot more now?
President Johnson, I believe we were starting with the positive balance in the street fund. Mr. Zurov may have a better recollection of this. I know he had worked on that budget a little more than I had, but we were anticipating, I believe, a two million dollar transfer into that through sales tax. I thought we were carrying a balance of over $2 million when we started the year out.
Well, I gotta find it here, but I thought when I read it this morning, we had a negative start this year.
President Johnson, I guess I'm not aware of a negative balance. I know there were some projects coded out as street projects, and I'm not sure how
I've got it right here. 2014, we're showing, we ended the year with a negative balance of $3,402,000, in terms of a cash balance. And I realize with cash accounting, we could have, for example, we could have a payment due us from the state, but we don't show it as revenue, as a receivable, until we actually
President Johnson, you know, the budget numbers we were working off of last year, as we were developing the budget, obviously weren't as up-to-date to these. The number that jumps out at me, that I think there might need to be a balance transfer on, is the Empire Road project, where we had $3.4 million shown to be expended in '14.
Right.
We also know the 40th Street East, looks like engineering was taking out of this, where that was a capital project also.
So, was Empire Road to be funded by the street fund, or was it to be funded?
I don't believe it was. I know there was a cost participation agreement. I think this is the total cost of, as it was bid out, Empire Road and Willer Circle, the hospital is paying for a portion of that, and then the other portion of it, our portion, was a CIP project, not to use the sales tax dollars.
And President Johnson, I would agree with Mr. Kubis, that our commitment to the Empire Road was less than what's showing, and so it's going to be an accounting change to recognize a revenue stream that's probably not recognized here.
Well, you will look further into that, and then maybe at the next meeting, tell us about that.
We will certainly do that. Thank you for noticing.
Are there any other questions or comments on the finance report? Not, then we'll go to item G. Well, excuse me, we would need a motion to accept the finance report.
Move to approve, Mr. President.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have the motion and the second. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so the motion carries. Now, we'll go down to item G, reports. Mr. Kessel, would you like to start?
Thank you, President Johnson and Commission. I wanted to give you a more in-depth update on House Bill 1176. This is the vehicle for the formula funds. There's been a couple different formula bills, but it appears this is the one that's going to be the one that'll get passed. I'm certainly hoping that it won't get passed in its current state, that there'll be a lot of negotiations in the second half of the legislative session. The reason I say that, of course, is the House passed this bill with a significant majority, I think it was 70 to 18, with an allocation of the formula changing from 70 25 to 70 30, or excuse me, 75 25 to 70 30. But even more dramatic is the fact that oil hub cities, who used to share in 9% of the revenue stream coming to local subdivisions, it's now down to 7%. Also, they did not make the change in the mining employment positions. We were expecting a change from $375,000 per percentage point to go up to a half a million dollars per percentage point of mining-related employment. That did not happen in this legislation. So, there's some definite areas of concern. You know, one of the questions that is one of strategy that I would have for the City Commission, we're obviously going to have to prioritize the types of things that we can hope to achieve with this legislation. The North Dakota Oil and Gas Association has indicated a desire to try to get that number to 60 40, state 60, local political subdivisions 40. So, they've completely flip-flopped an earlier position, recognizing the environment within which we are today. Moody's Analytics will provide their presentation on Wednesday of this week, on the 18th, and there's a lot of expectations that bills such as this will be revised up or down, depending upon the results of those, of that study. The challenge to us is, do we try to restore the 7% or the 9% that was reduced to 7? Do we try to restore the half a million per job that was reduced to 375? Or do we focus our attention on the formula itself and try to get that to 50 50? These are a lot of legislative strategies that are, that I guess I'd like to receive some input from the City Commission. I did talk to the City of Minot, and their interest, of course, lies, because they have a much lower percentage of employment, they want to see the 7% return to 9%, because they feel like they will fare better in the long run because of it. Williston and Dickinson, on the other hand, have a significant portion of revenue tied up in the mining percentage. We currently have about a high 30s in terms of mining percentage, so when you multiply that out times a half a million dollars per point, that's a significant amount of money. So, I'd like to pose that question to you as a commission. How would you advocate for these types of changes at the legislature, assuming that we are not going to get everything that we desire?
Any feedback from Mr. Kessel? Mr. Kessel, as you know, I've spent a lot of time with these numbers, the biggest factor for us is that $375,000 per percentage point of employment. That has a greater impact on the city than the actual formula part itself. So, if we could get the 375 up to 500 or somewhere close to that, that would have the greatest financial impact on the city. I don't understand the logic of taking the 9% down to 7%. I'm assuming that that offsets, or maybe even more than offsets, the change from 75 25 to 70 30.
It absolutely does that, yeah. We're, actually, it's, we will see...
We're probably worse off with those two changes than we were with the status quo.
If you work the numbers out, it's really close. It's really close.
So, but, you know, the argument I would make is that that employment percentage probably, more than anything else, illustrates oil impact, and that's a part of the bill that I'd like to see fully funded.
And I guess that's what occurs to me, is it's the most defensible, or whatever the right word is, it's the most obvious metric to bring before the legislature.
Yeah, I think Williston's up around 60%, and we're 39, I think, and I remember I, Minot was 12 to 15%, somewhere in there, 12%, yeah.
And this year, they're including the City of Mandan, because they have 7.5% if you include the refinery. And there is a great deal of discussion with regard to that. There's discussion with regard to using the MSA or Metropolitan Statistical Area, so that that money would be shared with Bismarck as well, and it wouldn't just simply be an allocation to the City of Mandan. Well, I'll certainly make that, that was my expectation, as I believe Williston's would be the same, because theirs is, as the mayor's pointed out, 60% of oil employment.
Is there conversation happening about a dual track, if you will, based on some trigger tied to the price of oil?
There, Commissioner Jackson, there's a lot of discussion with regard to triggers. Triggers, the difficulty in the triggers is where do you put them? And is it based upon the price of oil? Is it based on production? Is it based on revenue? So, but there is a lot of discussion with triggers. I would expect that some kind of trigger will happen, that if $60 oil is reached, that that will trigger a, maybe a percentage in the distribution. I don't know. I think it'd be really difficult to predict which trigger will get adopted or any, but there's, that is a predominant conversation.
I wouldn't anticipate $60.
Well, they're, my understanding today is that the, they're looking at certain predictions, and $60 oil is what's expected by the end of this year, and then by the end of next year, they're using $65 oil. Now, we'll find out more when Moody's presents their financial picture on Wednesday, but my guess is it's going to be somewhere in that vicinity. Some of the other things that were changed in the legislation from what we have currently in 1358 to 1176 is the oil and gas impact grant, and the Outdoor Heritage Fund, the outdoor, or excuse me, oil and gas impact grant, there was a deal made that allowed the City of Minot to receive the majority of the funds in that grant that were designated for airports last biennium. They received, of the $50 million that was allocated, they received between 30 and 35. This biennium was supposed to be an allocation to Williston for a similar amount, and then next biennium, it was Dickinson's turn. And my understanding today is they've lowered that designation to airports to $10 million in the current legislation. I assume some of that will get restored, but I, obviously, we can't make that prediction. So, that means that the obvious assumption would mean that our funding in next biennium for the airport would also be in jeopardy, and that would depend upon, of course, oil cost or oil prices and production at the time. So, that is a battle that we're having as well. The Outdoor Heritage Fund would accumulate at $15 million per fiscal year for a total 10 million for the grant fund would be designated for hub cities, of which, and then 20 million for school districts, and 800 for certain eligible cities, which would obviously not be oil hub cities. Hub city school districts, receiving the current law, 17 million, and in House Bill 1176, as it is introduced, would go to 39, and as the House passed it, would go to 30. So, there's a nice increase for hub city school districts. And counties went from $301 million in their current law to 368 as the House passed it, but they were supposed to go up to 615, so that's a significant reduction for counties as well. So, I don't want to throw a whole bunch of numbers. Suffice it to say that there's a lot of work to be done in the last section, or last half of the session, and I'll focus a great deal of our attention on the percentage of oil employment and firming that number up, hopefully to half a million per point.
I think the way this is shaping up is, if you back out the surge funds, what we're likely to receive for the biennium ending in 2017, our funding could very well be less than what we are receiving in this biennium that ends here at the end of June. It's, if you back out, if you just go by what the formulas are going to bring us, if there are really no changes or very little, few changes to the House version, and remember that's a formula bill, so it's based on production and price, and we're going to start out this biennium maybe with greater production than 24 months ago, but certainly a much lower price, but production is likely to decline, at least early in this biennium. We're probably going to generate less dollars, and so, you know, I know I said this at the previous meeting, but I think when it comes for infrastructure build-out in 2016, there will be very little, if any, and again, it's imperative that city staff, you've got your priorities right in a row, and if there is something that has to be built next year, we want to make sure we're building, I mean, if we're going to build anything, we want to build the right thing. building, I mean, if we're going to build anything, we want to build the right thing. So, but, you know, by the time you use monies to balance your general fund and to pay some of the debt service load, I don't think there's going to be much left over for significant capital construction projects.
One comment related to that, President Johnson. There has been discussion, because of the low reimbursements to political subdivisions in the formula bill, of another surge bill next biennium. Problem with that is they have now moved, or proposing to move, a great deal of K-12 education funding into the revenue stream, the buckets. So we have all these buckets that fill up, and soon as one's filled, it fills the other, and so on and so forth. Well, now they've added the K-12 system to the tune of over $700 million. So the general fund fills first, and I'm going to get, I'm probably going to get these numbers wrong a little bit, but it's 200 million to the general fund, and then I believe it goes right to the K-12 funding. So they're essentially moving all of K, the state's portion of K-12 funding, to be burdened by oil and gas receipts. To me, that's a scary proposition because of the volatility that we've experienced in oil and gas prices. But that's the proposal as it is today, which means that the CIF fund, which is where the current surge funding is paid out of, will have a lot less dollars in that fund because of, the funds in front of it are much larger than they've been in the past. So to get to accumulate a billion dollars like we went into this session with, it'll be very, very rare, unless there's a huge recovery in oil price.
You know, even if there was such a recovery and there was a second surge bill, you know, we wouldn't receive that money until early 2017. And so 2016, I think the die is cast, and it's going to be a really lean investment year for the city, so. Well, do you have other legislative comments to make?
Those are the only legislative. I have a few other updates, but I know we have a timetable.
Okay. We'll come back to you once we get through the timetable, then. So we'll go to the timetable agenda. There is a 5 o'clock. It has to do with the street vacation, and Mr. Kuvas is going to introduce this item.
Thank you, President Johnson, commissioners. Before you is a petition to vacate some platted city right-of-way. It's, the area's in the Westgate Industrial Acres subdivision between lots 4, 5, and 6, and the owners of those lots have signed a petition to vacate Gateway Street and a portion of Westgate Avenue. The applicant has secured a utility easement that generally follows the existing right-of-way. And if the resolution to vacate is passed, the applicant has expressed their desire to combine those three lots that are currently separated by the street right-of-way. City staff has discussed this proposal and is in favor of recommending the vacation go, move forward.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kuvas. And Mr. Coling, if I've got it straight, this is Resolution 10-2015?
That's correct, Mr. President.
Okay. All right. You've heard Mr. Kuvas's introduction and recommendation. Do you have comments or questions? There are no comments or questions. Is there a motion regarding Resolution 10-2015?
I'll move we approve the resolution.
I'll second.
We have the motion and the second. Any discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Mr. Kessel, we'll go back to you and then let you finish some of your updates.
Thank you. Just one last comment on the legislative side. The House did pull out the percentage of employment that was going to be reimbursed to the cities of West Fargo, Jamestown, Fargo, and Grand Forks. They were scheduled to receive, they had about 2% of mining employment in each of those communities, so they would receive, depending upon what that formula number is, you know, about a million dollars, we'll just round it to, and that, those are now gone. They wouldn't receive those funds. I wanted to make the commission aware that we have been receiving some concerns with regard to a couple different things related to liquor laws and their enforcement within the community. There was allegations that a couple of our licensed entities were not charging the appropriate amount of tax based upon selections that they made during the application process. So Attorney Coling and I took one for the team on, last Sunday, and we went around and made some purchases to verify the amount of taxes being charged on liquor establishments. We did find some anomalies, and so a letter is going out to the one institution that is, that has not changed the tax, and they're not collecting the appropriate amount. We will be removing their right to sale, sell liquor on Sundays. That letter will go out tomorrow, and so we expect that we'll be getting a phone call shortly thereafter to rectify that situation. We also are issuing a letter to another liquor license holder who has not provided the appropriate amount of separation between the store itself and some retail products and the rest of the store. We've, that letter is, will go out shortly to rectify that situation as well. So you may have been receiving phone calls from individuals, and I just wanted to make sure that you were aware of those changes. We also are in the process, as our budget allows, or calls for, to sell the Baker Building, which is the building that we own on the north side of Broadway and on the west side of States. It's right next to the school bus barn. We are having a public sale of surplus property. That's currently scheduled for the second weekend in April, and shortly thereafter, we'll spend some time cleaning that building up, and then we'll list that for sale. We're also in negotiations with Southwest Water to do the same on the former water building, and then a property on the north side of Broadway, just adjacent. We will bring that, we anticipate bringing that document to you fairly soon, as soon as those negotiations are complete. So those were part of the revenue streams in the 2015 budget, and just wanted to give you an update that we are working diligently to make those happen. So with that, I'll turn the floor over to the Hiring Journal and...
Can you do the Hiring Journal in three minutes? All right.
Good evening, Mr. President, commissioners. Starting off with police officers, we are in interview process, second interview right now. We have three openings for police officer, communication specialist. We had two openings. We did fill one of those, and the position just closed today, so we'll begin interviews for that real soon. Scale attendant for our, for our solid waste department, we had one opening there, and that person started today. Sanitation laborer, we have two openings there. We did fill one of those positions, so we'll continue to look for one more position. Sanitation operator, we just hired one, but I believe we'll be having an opening for the landfill real soon here. Street maintenance operator, we actually had two positions open and made two offers, so we're in the background phase right now on both of those positions. That would be, that department would be full then. Chief engineering technician, that position is on hold at this time. Deputy city administrator for finance and administrative services, the position did close, and we're just setting up interviews for that for next week.
How many, excuse me, how many candidates will you interview?
We will have four. We just hired an accountant who started last week with the accounting department. Facility operator, we still have one position to fill, and offer was made and accepted today, so we'll be doing background on that person. Custodian as well, we just are doing the background phase. GIS technician, I'm happy to say that person started today, so we have that position filled. Engineering project is on hold, project manager is on hold at this time. Planning director, we will do interviews yet tomorrow on that, and then hope to make a decision. And the safety training is on...
How many, excuse me, how many candidates are you interviewing?
We, it's down to three.
Three? Okay.
And that's all I have.
Okay. Are there any comments or questions for Mrs. Dominic?
Same question, I think, that we've asked in the past. Are you seeing any more applicants for jobs? Can you tell any difference?
A little bit. Some of the departments, street department and some of those requiring CDLs, we're starting to see a few more applications. Not a lot. I think we're going to start seeing more. Communication specialist, that was, that was a little disappointing. We had one, one applicant. You know, just depends. Police department, we're not seeing as many as we used to.
All right. Any other comments or questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We'll jump back to the timetable agenda. At 5:10, we have a rezoning petition for Barron's Vista, and Mr. Millstone will introduce that item.
Thank you, Mr. President, commission members. This is to consider a rezone petition from agricultural to low and medium density residential, community commercial, general commercial, and public. The 282-acre site, which is on the far west side of the city, is generally located in the north half of Section 6, Township 139 North, Range 96 West. The Planning and Zoning Commission did not make a recommendation. And with that, planning staff is available to answer any questions, and I believe the Barron's Group is going to give a presentation.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Millstone. Mr. Coling, this is Ordinance 1573?
That's correct, Mr. President.
Okay. And this will be the first reading of this ordinance, and at this time, we'll declare the public hearing open, and anyone that wishes to comment on proposed Ordinance 1573 may do so now. Just come to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments.
Good afternoon, Mr. President and commissioners. My name is Susan Weeks. My address is 1626 Lincoln Way, Coeur d'Alene, Idaho. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of the Barron's Group. We do have a PowerPoint presentation for you tonight. Would it be okay if we handed out copies of that presentation to the commissioners?
Certainly.
I'm going to use the first three slides of it in my presentation, and the rest will be covered later through another presentation by Danny Lim. I have tonight with me Danny Lim, the CEO of Barron's Group of Companies from Singapore, Sean Soren, and Steve Circle, the project engineers, and Catherine Cronin, the real estate manager on this matter. As Mr. Millstone indicated, we come forward to you from the Planning and Zoning Commission without a recommendation. The project we are seeking to zone is on the west side, near the Five Diamonds area, and is outlined there on the map. Well, if I can be smarter than the zapper. It is a mixed land use area in your future zone map, and we have it outlined there in the hatched marks. And the zoning that we are requesting is mixed-use zoning, and as Mr. Millstone indicated, we have a mix of R1, single-family residents we're seeking. That's approximately 79 acres of our zoning request. Multifamily R2 zoning, which is approximately 17 acres. General commercial, which is approximately 69 acres. And community general is the remainder with some open space. This petition follows a substantial investment by Barron's Group. Just to get to the point of presenting this tonight to the commissioners, we have obtained a water study, a sewer study, and a transportation study to address the infrastructure requirements of the project, and we come tonight confident that we can meet the infrastructure needs. I hear very well what President Johnson has said at this meeting and other meetings, that the city does not have money to contribute to development, and we would not be asking for contributions to assist us in that development. We would be doing our own infrastructure developments and tying into existing city infrastructure to serve the needs of this rezoned property if and when it gets to the point of final plot approval and annexation. I do know that Mr. Millstone has recommended an approval of Phase 1. We are asking you to consider approving the entire rezone, and the reason we are asking that is to solidify and assure our financing. We come tonight with the ability, we know we have the ability based upon financial commitments to do it, but to do it, we need to look forward to having the entire rezone done, because that does then solidify and assure our financing commitments. So we are asking that it be allowed to move forward as an entire rezone and not just a Phase 1 approval. The purpose of the project as it is presented is for mixed use. We want to assure the quality of life within that community project and its viability. We see that your community has already made that commitment. I was quite impressed driving around and seeing your rec center, your new hospital, and your library, and we want to continue that tradition into this rezoning request and the future submittals that would follow a rezoning, and we recognize that's a commitment by the city, and we intend to follow through on our commitment. I know that there were some concerns raised at the Planning and Zoning Commission that there was not financial commitments, and that there is inventory being held in the market by others who have come before you for zoning requests and then not really done anything with them. They've let them lay fallow, and it ends up eating up a lot of your city land without really any productive use of that land. And to address that, we are willing to make those commitments to you in forms that are solid commitments, to make sure you're comfortable moving forward with the rezone, and to assure you that we're going to follow through on our commitment to actually develop and not hold this either speculative property or just one of those wishes that don't really follow And towards that end, we have spent over $30,000 just doing studies to assure that we're not making false promises. We have done the transportation study, the water study, and the sewer study, so we know that those are viable infrastructures that we can prepare and put in place. The other thing that we have looked at closely and will be targeting with this is a segment of housing in your market that appears to have a need and some pent-up inventory that's not being met. Currently, FHA loan guarantees will loan in Stark County, will guarantee loans in Stark County up to $299,000 on a home. In looking at your real estate that is available, much of it lies above that amount and puts it beyond the reach of most average families. Our goal in this, in this, our one portion is to keep the housing down below that FHA limit so that people can afford to get in there and to utilize those government programs. So our housing market will be geared towards those individuals in that $280,000 range who can then get the FHA guarantees from the banks so that they can afford to have those homes. I am going to turn it over at this time to Danny Lim, because he is the one to talk to you about the ability of Barron's Group to move forward with the financing on this, and to talk to you about a history of the company.
Before you do that, would you take a question or two?
Certainly.
Okay. Are there any questions? Is it Weeks?
It is.
For Ms. Weeks? The question I... The question I have, in your remarks, you mentioned you're willing to give us guarantees that you will follow through on this, this project. Can you elaborate a little more on that and how you see that happening?
I can tell you how I've seen it done in other circumstances, both sitting at a time in Mr. Coleing's chair as the municipal attorney and also sitting on this side as the developer's attorney. And that is, your ordinance can have a repealer in it that says if we don't commence construction in a year, that the zoning automatically repeals. That can occur at the zoning level. At the subdivision and annexation level, you can also put benchmarks in there for things we are to achieve by certain periods of time and infrastructure we are to fund. And in talking to the project engineers, which I, I'm worried Mr. Jackson will get after me and catch me because I'm not very good at talking engineering, but, and you also met President Johnson, but my understanding is on Fairview, it goes through the Five Diamonds area. They have not brought that up to city standards. We are willing to do that in a development agreement and then ask for latecomers fees if we are ahead of their project. The sewer, we have looked at both a temporary lift station to be put into place to serve just this rezoned area. And then as, as we read your sewer study, it appears you're going to need a permanent lift station down the road. It could be built into your development agreement that we do what's called a dedicated fund. And a dedicated fund is we prepay our portion of the burden on that lift station. The city manager then puts that into a dedicated fund that is dedicated to fund that permanent lift station when it comes online, if there is other development that occurs. And of course, then with the transportation, we would bring the roads up to city standards. I know that at the zoning level of the discussion, there was concerns that we were not able to get enough right away to bring 50th Avenue up to major collector. And right now, for our project, based on the number of average daily trips that we would be putting on that road, a local collector would be adequate, and we would bring it up to that standard. You could then also, again, look at dedicated funds for us to contribute a fair share to bringing it up to major collector at such time as that's needed. So those are just some of the thoughts that I've had without really having discussion with your staff as to their needs. But those are all things that I have seen done and have done myself to assure cities and counties that they end up with the infrastructure and the commitment that they need and not put out taxpayer money to subsidize development.
Thank you. Any other questions at this time for Ms. Weeks? All right.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. President, fellow Commissioners, as well as gentlemen, lady. Where do I press from here? Right, okay, there you go. Right, I'm Danny from Singapore. I'm not from China. So if you understand Singapore, we are a very small, tiny city of about 5.5 million. They say that in Singapore, one in six of them are millionaires. It is because of real estate. And of course, I'm possibly one of the six that you are talking to. But not to brag about what we have, but what we have done for Barron's. Okay, there are two issues that I would like to address this evening. One of it is how would oil impact our development? And the other one is how sure are we that we'll continue on and finish the project that we actually intend to do? Right? And of course, we are not going to discuss about the project in details because I think that would be left for the city to discuss with my engineers as well as my architects. But today, we are actually talking about rezoning and how we are actually going to fulfill that. So let me just take you through a little bit about Barron's. We do real estate development. When we say real estate development, we actually go in, buy land, acquire, put in infrastructure, and build to the last. We finish products. Okay, we don't sell lots, we don't sell land. All right, I mean, if there are commercial plots that we need to sell, we'll sell. But if they need us to build, we'll build and we'll lose. We also do asset acquisitions. We will actually bring you that a little later. We have done our first hotel in Kildia, just operational on the 15th of October last year, and we are into property development. In the year 2014, we actually gained this promising SME 500 awarded by the Business Association in Singapore. This is our track record since 2010. I think I'm possibly the only Singaporean who will ever dare to step into U.S. to acquire a set, asset during the Lehman Brothers crisis. When everybody is running away from U.S., I came in. Okay, I believe in U.S., I believe in Dickinson, and that's exactly where we started. I took 480,000, and I've actually developed it into close to about 50 million over the course of about three years. Now, I believe I can actually do a lot more for the city of Dickinson because if you actually look at it, we have actually done a lot of developments as well. In Malaysia, we have done Wandanga. That is basically a development of about half a billion ringgit, which basically is about 200 U.S. dollars. And we are actually into the second development, which is basically Eight Dunga. That is about 1 billion dollar ringgit, which is basically about 400 U.S. dollars. We are into Indonesia as well, we are into Philippines. But our first, my first love is still U.S. because that is exactly what happens in 2010. When everybody runs away, I came in. And, you know, this is exactly what we have done. We have actually bought a lot of real estate during the time. It is no point in developing because, you know, there are a lot of real estate that are way below development cost, replacement cost. So we have actually bought them, we have sold them, we have done rental, we have actually done seller financing. 984 foreclosure properties is exactly what we have done. We have actually hit investment returns over 40%. Okay, so we have a lot of investors that actually believe in us. In fact, currently, we have 200 million that is actually sitting in Singapore, or rather in Asia, waiting for us to deploy. So we really want to deploy our funds in Dickinson and do something about it. All right, this is one of the things that we actually do. We rehab, we take an old building and we rehab it, and of course, we make some money along the way. It's not new. This is another sample that we have actually done. In Kildia, this is what we have, we have a lot of problem building Kildia because during the time, the ground was actually frosted about, about two feet deep, and it takes us a long time to build this up. We have actually put in about 4.5 million. We have never run away from anything. We basically just build it. And even though the oil economy actually runs down, we continue, and we are actually still financing it, and we are doing well. Okay, this is our Kildia project that we have done. Okay, this is multifamily that we have actually gone in to buy. We have bought three before the prices goes all the way up. And this is possibly about five, six million, yeah, about five to six million altogether. And of course, the Barron's Vista that we actually want to. Now, what I actually understand is this, as oil has actually fallen from $100 all the way to $43 today. Okay, it is similar to what has happened during the Lehman Brothers crisis, the financial crisis, when everybody actually runs away. And that is when we should actually start building something because that is the lowest cost that we can actually grab. Okay, and we understand oil will not be staying at $45 or below for a long time. Okay, it can stay there for about two years. It doesn't matter to me. Okay, because Asia is not affected by oil crisis. In fact, we are actually enjoying the oil at low prices. So that's the reason why we have a lot of funds. The one thing that we actually realize is if we can actually deploy the funds here, okay, we are actually taking advantage of what is happening right here. When the suppliers and the vendors need business, and we can actually give them businesses, but at a more realistic price. I understand the cement here is about $135 per square foot, which is ridiculous. We should be able to get it at 80. Okay, but then there again, we can only do this during this time. Okay, when everybody is not building anything, we will actually come in and build. So we are not looking at the bank financing. We have our own financing. Of course, as time goes by, probably two years later, when a bank actually needs business, we actually give them some business. But the more important thing is we want to build houses that are actually 280,000 below. Now, that is a real need for the city of Dickinson because we have spoken to a lot of people and a lot of residents and people have actually told us, one of their major, major need is basically to buy a house and to settle their families in here. But the only problem is that the property prices are too high. So we have done our calculation. We are very confident we can actually do it 280. Even if I'm actually going to lose money, it is not, I'm not going to string away, I'm actually going to continue. But basing on the current situation, I think God is blessing me a lot because this is a time where we actually get to build at the lowest cost. When the oil prices comes back, the cost is actually going to escalate again. Okay, so we are not worried about that. In fact, this is the best time for us to come in and start building. Right? Now, this is a piece of land that we have. Okay, and of course, like I said, today, we are actually looking at rezoning. We have the commercial area that we are actually looking at, and of course, the less of it. But the important thing is basically the residential area that we are actually putting up. And that's the reason why Susan is saying that we have to have the entire land zoned in one phase. Because we can't be catering to the people of Dickinson, okay, with only the first phase. Okay, the first phase is basically commercial products where we can actually make some money. But then there again, of course, the main thing is the residential area that we are actually catering to the people. Okay, and, you know, on the 21st of May, when I was here, the first time, I've already mentioned our objective of coming to city of Dickinson, not to bring new ideas and new culture or whatever. We want to cater to the city of Dickinson. We want to cater to the residents of Dickinson. All right, so we are willing to work with the city. And in fact, we've been working with the city for almost a year now. We are hoping that the city will actually now work with us to actually supply back to the people, which of course, they are entitled to it. So this is a basic plan that we actually have. In fact, if I could actually just bring you back a little bit on what we intend to do. One of the idea that we have, when we were actually here last year, we spoke to a lot of people on the ground, the common people, and we asked them, I mean, personally, I asked them, what is the, what is the thing that you miss most? And most of them actually just come to me and tell me, you know what, I think what we miss is having a picnic with my family. Okay, and it blows my mind because in Singapore, we have 365 days of sun. And we can have picnic every time, anytime. And it blows my mind that people in Dickinson can't really have a decent picnic because yesterday was good weather and today is snow. I mean, I can't imagine how you guys actually have enjoyed a quality life with this kind of weather. I was just thinking to myself, why, why don't we build a great picnic ground indoor? So you guys can have picnic 365 days a year. Isn't that great? Yeah. Right, so that's exactly what we want to do. Now, I wouldn't be staying in Dickinson, so it doesn't work for me. Right? I have 365 days of picnic back in Singapore. But I'm putting in money, and this picnic ground is not going to make me money. Okay, frankly, it's not. Okay, I just want to do something, okay, for the people. And I think the community will really enjoy it when, you know, I can actually go any time of the day, and I will be able to enjoy this picnic ground. All right, and we intend to build 30,000 square foot. So yesterday, when I was walking in Minat, and I was walking Walmart, I was looking at it and say, okay, so 30,000 or to 60,000 square foot is about half the size of this Walmart. And we can easily do that. And you guys will be the best person to actually incorporate this, approve our rezoning and get your citizens and your residents a lovely place to really enjoy communal gatherings, picnic, any time of the year. We are actually going to put in a lot more things in there for the people. So we really hope you guys would be able to approve us. And like what Susan has said, if we don't do it, then... What is the word that you say? Repeal? For, for us in Singapore, it is a very simple thing. If you don't do it, punish us. Summon us, find us, in any way you want. Okay, if you say we are going to do it, we are going to do it. And we are going to build. We are not selling lots. We are going to build finished houses, and we are going to sell at below 280,000. Mark my words, this is what we do. As a Chinese, not China Chinese, as Singaporean Chinese, one of the main thing that we actually always tell ourselves is we can lose money, but we can't lose face. If I'm losing money over this project, I will still lose money, I will still build it, I will still sell, but I can't lose my reputation. If Danny says it is going to be below 280, it has to be below 280. There is no two ways about it. Whether the price is going down or up, it doesn't matter. We said we are going to do it, we will do it. And so if you are actually going to rezon this for us sometime next year, hopefully, if the weather permits, this will be up. And we will all enjoy this together. Okay, I'll be here to celebrate with you guys. All right, so do, give us due consideration. I can't share any more of my sincerity, but just to tell you that when we say we want to do something, we do it. And I'm willing to sign off any conditions you guys put in, put in place. And Susan is here to actually draft a contract, and you guys can put in anything you want, of course. Do not ask me to contribute $1 million. All right, but to contribute to the fire department, I think they need some fire staff, right? Okay, and we can actually do something because I think for the benefit of our development, we need some extra fire staff. And we don't mind putting in something as a contribution to that. I think, yeah, but this is a great project for the people of Dickinson. I think you guys should actually seriously consider it. Any question?
Thank you, Ms. Lim. Any comments or questions?
Mr. President.
Mr. Steiner.
Are there going to be any more? Anybody else that wants to come up and speak? I'd rather listen to everybody before I address.
Yeah, I talk too much. Thank you so much.
No, you, you did just fine. What Commissioner Steiner wants to know, are, is, are there going to be any other speakers? Okay, so if, do you have a question for Mr. Lim now?
No, I want to hear all speakers before I add in all the questions.
All right. Should.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Mr. President, Commissioners, my name is Matt Reichert. And I'm the broker that represents the Walton family in selling the property to the Barron's Vista Group. When we originally started out looking at selling the property, we were seeking a developer like, like Barron's Vista. We did have other developers that approached us, and we actually turned some of them down because they didn't qualify to meet our requirements of basically having them wanting to do what they say they're going to do. Barron's Vista was, rose to the top quickly. We put some conditions on them that were pretty strict in the very beginning. We made them commit to us upfront, and they fulfilled everything that we've ever asked them to do, including putting hard money in right away. And when we had other developers that would not do that, they did it right away. So what I can tell you is when Danny stands up and tells you he's going to fulfill his obligations, I can tell you from our standpoint, he has done everything we've ever asked him to do. The other thing that I wanted to let you know about was that the Walton family was originally a group of 12 people that didn't get along that well, and you've probably heard that maybe. And this whole process with the Barron's Vista Group... And this whole process with the Barons Vista Group has got them to solidify. And it's really funny, when they heard that there is going to be a commission meeting tonight, I've received emails from almost every single one of them saying, I hope you're going to go and you're going to speak on our behalf and tell the city that these are the people that we were looking for all along, and that's why we waited so long. I'm a little curious to hear your conversation afterwards, because I'm curious to hear, I've developed property, I know some of you have developed property, and I've never been in a situation where I walked to the podium and said, put a penalty on me if I don't fulfill my obligations. I've never heard a developer say that, ever. Not a one. So when I have a developer that comes to the podium and says, I'm willing to do what I'm saying I'm going to do, I'm willing to lose money to save face, I'm willing to pay penalties if I have to pay penalties, I'm willing to pay for the infrastructure, I can't imagine why we wouldn't look to developer like that and say, yeah, we'll help you down the road. So I may come back up and speak after I hear more of your discussion, because I'm a little curious as to, as to what might be the hesitance, if there is any. Thank you. I'll answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Mr. Reichert. Any comments or question? Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak to this issue, either pro or con?
President, Commissioners. My name is George Miles. I've been working in Watford City and Williston area for four and a half years as a general contractor. And looking at this development and everything going on with it, there's a need for this. I've, myself personally, can't afford to buy a house in the Williston-Watford area. I'd love to relocate to my family to a town like Dickinson. It's a beautiful area. I like coming to Dickinson. And houses at 280,000, you can't touch that in Williston-Watford to have a house unless you want a manufactured home. I don't want a manufactured home. I'd love to be able to work on projects like this. I have clients that I've worked for that we've developed 50 unit RV parks, which we're now closing and turning into modular home facilities. We've got a gas station we're currently working on, just south of Williston. We've worked on lots of projects. And I would love to have the opportunity to work on projects like this, or at least come see them be developed. It's a need, their housing need in North Dakota is vast. I've seen, over the last four and a half years, mobile home parks come in and go away. The Mobile Home Park in Arnegard got shut down just this last week, and there's people that need housing. Or not mobile home, apologize, RV park. That's 75 RV park people that are going to have to find a house. Having this number of homes, 500 become available, is massive. I know that I have employees that, if they're living in RV parks, they'd rather have a house. I currently live at Prairie View Mobile Home Park in Unit 1, and I don't live in a mobile home because I want to be in a mobile home. I look at this development, and it's great, and I could see the opportunities. I have my clients right now that are looking for commercial property in the Dickinson area, and they can't find what they're looking for. Either it's not developed out, or it's not, it's not suited for their needs. I have a lot of clientele that are from all over the country, ranging from Florida, Minneapolis, California, and I could see the need. So I am very much supportive of this. I would love to bring my family and find a subdivision like this, definitely in the Dickinson area. Thank you.
Just for clarification, you're not a resident of Dickinson currently?
No, I actually live in the Prairie View Mobile Home Park in Watford City.
In Watford City, okay.
That little tiny town I don't want to be in.
Well, we're all native North Dakotans, we're familiar with western North Dakota. What are you experiencing right now in, in the oil patch? You mentioned the Arnegard closing. Are you seeing more of that taking place in Williston and Watford City and points in between?
Yeah, I should also mention that I'm a licensed civil engineer as well. But I choose to do my general contracting versus the engineering, just because there's a lot of engineers working in North Dakota, and I probably will eventually get my license here. What I've seen in projects that I've worked on over the last four and a half years was, four and a half years ago, everybody wanted an RV park. Why? Because everybody was dragging an RV to North Dakota to go to work. Now, you're seeing single-family residents. We have a 25-lot subdivision that is northwest of Arnegard, that it has higher-end homes going in because it's a need in the market on large lots. We have an extremely large subdivision going in south of Williston that we're going to be breaking ground on this year, that has four apartment complexes. I want to say it's 86 single-family residents and 115 six-plexes. Those are all huge projects, and you notice they're all permanent housing versus RV parks. I haven't worked, I worked in my last RV park last year, it was 50. And four years ago, there was, I couldn't tell you how many, and we've done work on, that everybody's shift, what we're seeing in the market as far as construction is a shift from the RV parks, went to mobile home, manufactured home type aspect of things, and now it's shifting more into the permanent residence. People are starting to want to bring their families. And you're seeing a lot of those in more of a rural, a lot of people that are coming to North Dakota are from rural areas that are, need to find work. They don't want to necessarily live in downtown Dickinson. Me, I don't want to live in downtown Dickinson. I'd rather live on the outskirts of Dickinson where I have the convenience of the city, but I'm not in the middle of the city, in the heart of it. Same aspect in Williston and Watford. You're seeing a lot of residential development that I have seen over the last four and a half years that is permanent housing, but it's all coming in the perimeters, and a lot of them are in larger lots. And that's what I've seen.
One other question. Do you have a business relationship with Barons Vista?
I've never had a contract or worked for Barons at all, ever. Then I'd like to work for Barons.
Well, if one in six of them are millionaires, we probably all would like, like to work for them, but... But are there any other questions? Is it, George, what was your last name again?
Miles. M-Miles, yes.
For Mr. Miles? All right, thank you for being here.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name is Karen Wyler. I'm not an expert on anything, but I was born in Dickinson, lived my entire life here. And I'll tell you the need I see, and it's even for our children that want to get into a home. They can't afford 400,000 for a home, you know, so I'm here to speak on behalf of the Barons Group. I think it's an awesome opportunity for our children, you know, that to move from apartments and start their lives as families in, in homes that are affordable. Basically, all I really came to say. Okay?
My name's Jimmy Roberts. I currently reside in Richardson, North Dakota. Unlike Danny, I'm not one in the sixth, you know, I'm just your average working Joe. I moved to North Dakota, let's see, three days after Thanksgiving in 2010. And I'd say for a good, you know, three years, I've been doing the camper life. I mean, it's rough, it sucks, you know, I have two kids, a wife, you know, big dog, and we just had a baby as well. Fortunately, we were, you know, able to find a place. In Richardson, it wasn't, you know, out of our price range, so we got out of the camper life. But, you know, even still, I feel for the people that are in the camper life, you know, and that's, when I say I'm from, I don't know how to say this, I'm a little nervous. But I'm originally from California, right? When, when I moved to North Dakota, I automatically fell in love with the state, you know? I mean, it's, it's a beautiful country. I mean, there's so much land out here and just things to do, go hiking and fishing and hunting with the kids. You know, I grew up in the suburbs of Orange County, you know, and so when I see a house listed for $300,000 or $350,000, I expect it to be a brand-new home, you know? Like, I mean, Temecula, California, for example, you can go and buy a brand-new home for $180,000 to $250,000, and that's reasonably priced, you know? But the only problem is, is there's no work down there. And so, you know, if you guys do approve this, which I hope you do, I could definitely see moving my family and, you know, bringing the rest of the troupe up and settling down in Barons Vista, because not only would it be affordable in my price range, because I, I do work for an oilfield service company, and I've seen the slowdown, but, you know, we're still making money and it's still there. I have 10 years oilfield experience, so, I mean, I'm 32. I got started when I was 22 in Wyoming, and, I mean, I've seen the boom out there with the natural gas and the same deal. And, you know, it's, a lot of the complaints that I hear from people is there's nowhere to live, you know? What am I supposed to do when I get out there, you know? How can I pay, you know, $2,200 a month rent for a one-bedroom or a two-bedroom apartment, you know, when that's my house payment? You know, and I think a lot more people would be willing to relocate their families and, you know, grow the city if there was affordable housing that was, you know, built decent and, you know, it was quality. That's all I got. Any questions?
Well, thank you, Mr. Roberts. Are there any questions for him?
No.
Is there anybody else that would like to comment?
Good evening, Galen Baker of Stark Development here in Dickinson. I'm feeling kind of vanilla up here because, you know, our development corporation was never asked for a resolution of support for this project, and, and so we've never done one. We do recognize that there's, you know, there's good things that happen when we develop commercial and residential property, and, you know, that, that there's a need for that. We, we recognize that. At the same time, I think Mr. Millstone maybe has a good point, that, you know, it's, it's tough to project how big we should go with something like this. And so I recognize the devil's in the details and that the city, the city's great professional staff has to deal with that, and, and I don't. So, you know, just like to say that we generally are in favor of, of growing the city, of commercial and residential development, such as is proposed here. We do not have as good a handle as you folks do on the percentage of commercial that's out there, the percentage of single-family and residential that's out there. But I, but I do believe that these people are sincere and that they're going to spend the money, and certainly, I am, I believe the city has competent staff to, to put enough clawbacks, if you will, in there so that if this, you know, if, if the wrong thing happens, you've got the capability of not getting the city into something they can't be responsible for.
So you're in favor of the project?
Generally speaking. But I can only speak for me. I cannot speak for the entire board.
Right, you're speaking as...
As a Stark County citizen.
As a Stark County citizen, yes, but you're in, I'm just clarifying, you're in favor of the project.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
I've only been in Dickinson about three months, but I'm a social girl, and so I get involved in church and Bible study and the cry that I hear out there...
Can we start with your name?
I'm Nancy Jacobson.
Okay.
Sorry. Jacobson. But the cry that I hear out there is housing. People can't afford to stay here. There's, and I meet such wonderful people out there that are just, they're just not affording to be able to live here. And, and they're thinking they have to pull up their roots and go home, especially the ones that are, that have families. And I work for the Dickinson Press and I do the classified ads, so I see what things are rented at. And I also was, when I first heard of it, I was looking at it, and at first, it was like they were saying they could build them for like 100, I mean, $250,000, and I looked at, you know, at 3.2%, what you can get a loan for, for fixed for 30 years if you got good credit, 6.5% or 6.8% at bad credit. It's $1,000 less to own a home than rent a home. So it's, to me, it's looking like it's a win-win. It's, it's bringing people in that want to put their roots down, that want to have their families grow up here, versus transients that are living on top of each other just to try to make it and have to go home. And, and a lot of them are losing their families because of the fact that they're here two weeks and they're two weeks, and their families are falling apart. But if you put something like this in, it just, it's just a win-win situation for all. I also look at, my gosh, I went out to buy shoes the other day. You need, you need some more, you need this mall. It's like, you go to two little areas and you got all these people for this shoe area that's this, this big. I had to go to Bismarck to get shoes, you know? You're losing a lot of, you're losing a lot of revenue just by not having more stores that, that people can pick and choose from. When you look at the proposal, what they're building, it's, it looks family. It looks like, you know, it's something that, that you can come and you can have a good time just sitting around playing with your family. They're proposing having wonderful shops come in, affordable housing. I just, put the penalties on them, you know? If you're afraid, put the penalties on them. They say that, that they're welcome to it, and that, that they're going to bring in and do it, force them to do it.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm Tracy Toos. I think you, most of you guys know me. I guess I'm, I'm in support of the Barons because there's not a lot of developers out there coming to the table, offering what they're offering to do. And as a developer myself, I guess, if you're going to get somebody outside the norm agreeing to spend that kind of money and do the infrastructure concerns that you guys are all well aware of, and, and they're all in, what's it hurting any other developer other than lowering the cost of land and probably even some of my land that I own? But I know I'm not, I'm not willing to throw the kind of money that they're willing to throw at it. So if they're going to come into Dickinson and put that kind of investment into it, I'm for it, so.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Toos. Anybody else?
I have one thing to add. Sorry, I was a little nervous. I'm originally from California, but North Dakota is my home. I'm what you call a permanent transplant. Whether the oil field goes away, this is where I am, this is where my family's at, and this is where I'm going to stay. And so to see something like this go through would be, I think, beneficial. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. We're, we're pleased to hear about your commitment to the state. Thank you. Good night. This is the beauty of North Dakota, even though this is a Dickinson issue, we draw them from all over the state. It's a good thing. Anybody else? Okay, well, then, at this time, we'll, we'll close the hearing. And Mr. Coleen, I've got a couple of questions for you. In the present ordinance, as it's written right now in our, in our electronic meeting book, does it cover the entire project, or is it just covering the first phase, the rezoning?
Mr. President, as it has been applied for by Barons and as the ordinance is written, it covers the entire project, the higher, entire 270-some acres that they are requesting rezoning for.
Okay, and then the second question, Ms. Weeks had, she, she gave some examples of legal assurances that we could write into the ordinance. Is there anything like that in the present ordinance right now? And if, if not, I would, could you comment on her suggestions, whether or not you think those types of things are possible?
Mr. President, there is nothing in the ordinance that is... Mr. President, there is nothing in the ordinance as, as it is currently written that would provide any sort of, um, timeline or a deadline on a progress of the construction project. What we have typically done in similar situations is to include those sorts of commitments, uh, financial or otherwise, in a development agreement. If the commission does pass first reading of this ordinance and you give us the staff the direction to move forward and to craft a development agreement, I would anticipate putting those sorts of conditions, deadlines and guarantees into a development agreement, which we could then bring before the commission.
Do you have an opinion, you know, a legal opinion on what is the, and the most appropriate or strongest way to do that? If it should be in the ordinance or in the development agreement?
I think my recommendation to you would be to put it into a development agreement. Typically, we can make those, those things as detailed as we wish and then record those against the property so that any future buyers of the land would also have notice of the, the commitments of the developer for those projects. It is similar to what we've done in, in other situations with other developers, to have those sorts of commitments put into a development agreement.
Ms. Weeks, do you, do you have any objection to, uh, or comments include, uh, if we include the types of things you gave as examples in the development agreement as opposed to the ordinance?
We would have no objection to including it in the development agreement. I, I might suggest that, Mr. Coleen, consider also including it in your, just the repealer part in your zoning ordinance, because what I heard planning and zoning saying fairly strongly is that they're tired of inventory sitting on the market, and that would cover it in two circumstances. It would automatically repeal without you needing to do anything by ordinance if we don't move forward. Something else I didn't raise that I, I do know was another concern was that we would buy this for speculation and sell it, and so perhaps something else in the development agreement is a non-assignability clause.
Thank you.
If I could interrupt, I do think, Mr. Coleen, that we have done a similar thing with apartments, with our three properties using a PUD arrangement with some kind of a performance measure.
We have, Commissioner Jackson, and we've done it in other circumstances as well. There are other commercial properties around town that, uh, we do have a sort of repealer clause or a zoning that expires after a certain period of time if substantial progress on the development is not made.
Mr. Steiner, you had a question earlier. If that question hasn't been addressed, would...
I have a, a couple of comments. One, Ms. Weeks, uh, you do understand this is being recorded and you said you understand that the city has no money, correct? Because I think that is a, a concern we all have is that, you know, two thousand and sixteen is not looking good for the city and seventeen, we don't have an idea yet, but you are correct there, you know what I mean? We don't have any money, so when I hear that you guys are willing to take on infrastructure, that was one of my concerns.
Well, A, Commissioner Steiner, I tried to bribe Mr. Kessel to not have me recorded and have the frame over here. That didn't work. I do know it's recorded. I have watched some of your city, um, commissioner meetings. B, we know, we've heard you say it in other meetings and I heard you say it again tonight just in staff matters, you don't have money and we're not expecting you to subsidize development. And in fact, most developments that I've ever worked on, the government entity was not able to subsidize unless they were asking us to oversize to accommodate other developments. And then there was some participation agreements entered into that with latecomers to cover the oversizing of like sewer and water. But we do come fully committed to fund our own development. We're, we're not looking to the city to fund our development needs. The city has funded a lot of it with the infrastructure work the city did before we ever stepped up to this podium. You've done a lot of sewer and water work.
Right, you're not too far from the hookups to the, to the east.
That's correct.
Um, you know, over the last five years at least, we've had a lot of developers come to us and say, "We want to build income-based housing," you know, and they haven't been able to do that yet. You know, uh, we, we hear numbers from a hundred and eighty thousand, you know, to two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. I, I don't think we can find a new home out there for less than two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, yet you guys say you can up to, or two-hundred-and-fifty thousand or lower.
Two-hundred-and-eighty thousand or lower.
Two-hundred-and-eighty thousand to two...
Two-hundred-and-eighty.
To two-eighty.
A hundred-and-eighty to two-eighty?
No.
Nope.
It's two-hundred-and-eighty thousand.
Lower than two-eighty.
It may be a little lower, but it's the two-eighty thousand range.
Okay, and, and your development plan, uh, you have agreed to go with the wider streets? Uh, you have agreed to go with seventy, seventy-five hundred square foot on the lots, correct?
Well, when we say we've agreed to that, we have discussed that with staff. Of course, we don't have a development agreement yet because we don't have rezoning, but those have all been discussions between the project management team and staff.
So we're not going to have to rehash this, the lot size or...
I don't want to speak for staff, but from our perspective, I think where, where we need to be with staff, uh, and I think maybe better directed to staff on if they're comfortable with what we're proposing once we get to the development agreement stage, but we don't intend any major changes.
Yeah, I, I'm in the situation as a lot of people here is that I have a daughter that still lives at home.
[laughing]
And she wants to rent, or she wants to get out of the house, but I'm the one that says, "Stay here." You know, I, I don't like to see the two-thousand, the twenty-two-hundred, the twenty-three-hundred dollars a month being paid for, for rental apartments. And, and, you know, so it's me saying, "Stay here until things, you know, slow down a little bit, more homes come on the market or whatever." But when I talk with your people about the price of the homes that you think you can build, I, I think there is, if you can do it, I, I think there's some hope for a lot of people out there. I, I think an eighty-thousand-dollar income will support a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar home.
That's our goal, and we, we haven't just pulled those numbers out of nowhere. We have done extensive marketing study to come up with our numbers. We're committed to that price market on the homes.
Okay. I, I'm intending to lean, and I, I am in support of your project. I, I think it's a good project. I, I think if, if you guys can commit to up to that two-eighty, I think we do need those homes in town. Uh, like I said, we've been looking at a lot of homes in the last month, month and a half, and there's nothing out there.
I, I drove around the community. I have been here before as a teenager pheasant hunting. It's changed a lot.
Yeah.
What struck me, and I, I said to one of the individuals who he actually pointed it out to me, is you have no real estate signs in your yards. You, you just don't seem to have much of a market, and then in watching your TV and the real estate, you have a, a public channel that has real estate on there, and some of those homes are beyond my price range. I don't know how your young people are starting out, and that is who we are targeting, are the, the average income homes who need those starter homes.
Um, what I want to say here, um, in, in support of your development and so on, you know, I, I would think we can put together an agreement, develop agreement of what our concerns are. Again, I can support it. I can support it. One of the things I think we need to discuss, and I haven't heard it mentioned tonight, is, is what is happening with the Five Diamonds property, because you've got to get the streets through there to your development.
When we looked at Five Diamonds the other day, Five Diamonds is, they're moving dirt and they've got box culverts in there, and it appears they're, they're got some drainage pipe and are moving forward. How far they intend to move this year, we don't know, but you have, from my research, you actually have the right-of-way dedicated for the road. So if they're not at a point to do the road, I would propose to staff that one of our requirements be that we bring Fairway Avenue up to your road standards and that we enter into a latecomers agreement at such time that Five Divine, Five Diamonds does develop out, they would have to contribute back their share of, of Fairway Avenue. That's not insurmountable.
And I think we do have, uh, one out there like that, uh, with the water development out, infrastructure out east across the interstate where they put in the water line, and we have an agreement with them where anybody new starts up out there, they tap into that water line, that they have access to go back and recoup some of their, their costs. So I don't think what we're talking about here is, is new to us. I don't know if you remember that situation or not.
Mr. Kessel or Mr. Coleen?
Well, Sundance Cove and Sundance Village put their infrastructure out and, uh, th- those lines could be used for other development.
But I think we have one out, Centennial Homes also, don't we, up just right across the, to the east? They put in a new water system out there, if I remember.
Commissioner Steiner, I, I've not familiarized myself with the details of that situation yet, but latecomers agreements of, of those sorts are, are not, um, they're not uncommon. Those sorts of, of things can be written into development agreements, and we have done so in the past.
Anything else? I, I do want to go on the record, by the way, that I did not tell my client to tell you to fine him and penalize him. I think I said to set benchmarks. That's just for my malpractice carrier in case they're watching.
We wouldn't expect anything less from an attorney, so... Steve, did, you moved up to the front. Did you have something you wanted to say?
Yes, Steve Josephson, city, city county planner, and I just wanted to explain the staff recommendation, um, for the partial approval. Just a couple of things to give you some background. The applicant did come through several months ago and asked for an expansion of the urban service area boundary, which, uh, which, which city commission did approve. So much of what we were looking at here was what areas of this are going to be, are going to be serviced by, by infrastructure soon and which part is there still waiting for, is still waiting for infrastructure? Plus, in our discussions with the developer, they had talked about when they planned it, that they planned to develop the area they show as Phase One first, and then Phase Two would, would, would follow. The area that's, that's shown as Phase One, which is primarily commercial, the infrastructure is going to be there. The right-of-way is there for the roadway. Water and sewer are going to be available, are going to be available to it. The second portion, Phase Two, yes, they have offered the, any improvements to sewer would come past our, our twenty-sixteen CIP, and they have offered, and this would be done through a development agreement, to build the lift station and the lines through there. The issue there is having a five-hundred, a five-hundred lot residential subdivision, well, maximum of five-hundred lot subdivision with, without having, having enough, enough road width to access an arterial, arterial roadway. They do have sixty feet using the, using the, um, the section line road. However, our long-range plan calls for that roadway to be a hundred feet, a hundred feet in width, and I know that they've tried to negotiate with the property owner to the south of them. They haven't had, they haven't had success with that, but the question then comes up is if we have a long-range plan that calls for a hundred-foot, a hundred-foot ro- wide right-of, right-of-way to serve this, are we then providing inadequate access to, inadequate access for a residential development? If that is the case, then approving Phase Two would be, would be prema- would be premature. As I said, overall, in terms of what they're proposing here for the entire project, it's not really an issue with that, but whether or not, especially in the West Dickinson Plan, where we talked extensively about having infrastructure to serve development, is whether the city wants, it wants to go through with, uh, you know, with this. As I said, in terms of the overall project, there's not any issues with that, just whether or not there's infrastructure to serve Phase Two. And that's my comment.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Josephson, as long as he's at the podium?
Thank you. I'm here to answer any other questions you may have.
Any other comments?
I, I have comments if there's...
Well, just, just a minute. We got one more comment from the audience?
If, if I may.
Yeah, sure, come on.
For the record, Steve Circle, and I, I just want to make a comment in kind of a realization, you know, I've been here at P&amp;Z, and, um, regarding, regarding the transportation, the master transportation plan, we understand that and recognize that. Transportation is what I majored in, and I specialized in that as well. But you don't get your driver's license and buy a Porsche right, right out of the gate. You buy maybe something that you, and I guess, I'm trying to do an analogy here, so to compare with, our development is, to reiterate, is going to be able to serve with the amount of right-of-way you have. And in the future, when a hundred-feet of right-of-way is required, all the other developers around us, we envision is going to, is going to be able to step to the table, but as it pertains to our project, well, certainly, and we in our plat, you will see hopefully is that we do dedicate half of that right-of-way as needed. We just don't, I just don't like reiterating that.
Okay, so you're, you're with the Barron's Vista group?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay. Okay, I've closed the hearing once. Is there anybody else that wants to talk? All right, I'm going to, the hearing is closed, and I'm sorry, uh, sorry to interrupt you, Mr. Jackson, but go ahead.
That's okay. I've got a number of comments to make, and I won't get them out in the right order and maybe say them the right way, but let me just dive in here. First of all, I want to give you some background with planning and zoning. As, as the Barron's folks have said, this has been before planning and zoning for almost a year, I think, maybe every month, every other month, something like that. I don't know how I'd characterize that exactly. There were a number of detailed things that I think bothered planning and zoning when we started. I do think most of those have been taken care of, and, and what remains, I, I expect, can be taken care of. When it came to a vote a couple of weeks ago, a motion was made to approve the rezoning request, and it failed on a four-to-four tie vote. You probably read that in the newspaper. So, you know, there was good discussion, there was good disagreement. It was good to see that that happened. I was one of the four that voted no, so I'm going to try to tell you why, and, uh, each of you can decide what you need to do. I'm not going to try to speak for the other seven. They, they probably had different reasons than I did. You know, the primary purpose, I think, that we have planning and zoning is to manage our growth and, and, um, that brings so many things in. Part of it is, is trying to manage the number of parcels we have in town. I think we all agree, we could have too many, we can have not enough. There's nobody that disagrees with the fact that our rents are too high, that our lot costs are too high. I don't, I don't think there's anybody that disagrees with that. I know for a fact that there are some lot prices being decreased right now because of the market. Uh, I think we all know there are apartment rents being decreased right now. They're still too high, but it's, it's headed in a different direction today. In the end, we still have to decide every time we make a decision like this, what our population is going to be, what we think our population's going to be. Yes, we've got numbers from NDSU, and they say various things, but in the end, we have to make the call of what we think that population's going to be, and then how much property we need, we think, that we think we need to handle that population. We also, I think, have to consider the pace of our growth, and I think we have to consider the location of our growth. Those are the things put together that made me vote no. We've got, with a, with an inventory that is as accurate as we can make it at this time, we have enough R-one and R-two lots either already platted or in the pipeline to be platted to handle about four thousand homes. We have enough R-three property platted and rezoned to give us about four thousand more apartment units. And I don't want you to think for a minute that I think all those will be developed. As I look through the list of R-one and R-two, I can throw fifty percent of those out immediately just because I don't think the developers are serious about doing it, which is really disappointing to me because it causes a problem for us. That's not the reason I voted no on this subdivision. I have to believe that if they... I have to believe that if they're telling us they'll do something, they're going to do it. We have to, we have to come at a vote with that basis when we look at a subdivision. We had a slow year last year for development, but much of it was because we didn't have the infrastructure. We do have that infrastructure or we're about to. Infrastructure will not be a problem for this subdivision. There are some things internally that they'll have to do. I think it's going to probably cost them a little bit more than they think it will, but it can be done. We do not have the situation that we had last summer. This inventory we've got right now, you know, in theory, would handle over 20,000 people. Now again, they're not going to all get built, we know that. But even if you do cut it in half, we've got things happening that will handle an awful lot of people. There are also location considerations, I think. We're building a couple of new schools, we're building a new fire hall. We've put in tens of millions of dollars into other neighborhoods to have infrastructure built last year and in the next few months. So I think that that's a consideration. I was able to meet with the Barron's folks this afternoon. We had a good meeting. We talked about a lot of things and one of the statements that was made, and you guys, correct me if I'm mischaracterizing this, but somebody made the statement that we could sell 600 homes a year in Dickinson. If that's the case, we probably need this subdivision. I don't think we can sell 600 homes a year in Dickinson, single-family homes. So, I could go on and on here. I do want to point out that we're talking a lot about residential, but the first phase of this project is 75% commercial. We've also got about 500 acres of commercially zoned property already in town. Again, not all of that is retail, retail kind of commercial. Not all of it's going to get developed, but we do have it sitting out there. I think I'll stop there and if you guys want to ask me any questions, you certainly can. The build-out, in fairness, I think the final build-out of Barron's is about 50% residential and 50% commercial.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jackson. And as I understand, the residential part of the plan, it's all R1 and R2. There is no R3 in it. Do I have that correct?
The majority of it is R1. There's a small portion of it that they're showing as R2.
And the R2 is units or structures, that would be four living units or less?
That's for apartment buildings, yes. Could get up to 10 townhomes per lot.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
Mr. President, if I may. Just to address who's sitting here and people are watching. I'm sitting here today because I went before with a development and they told us we couldn't do it the way we wanted to do it because of a road. And that's, I walked right out of that meeting and I walked over and filed a petition. And the thing that I don't like is, I agree with Mr. Jackson. There's a lot that's zoned already for all kinds of uses. How much is going to get developed? I don't know. But I don't believe in penalizing people because other people are sitting on their property. So, I'm in favor of this project because I see it as pushing people, maybe the people that are sitting on it right now, they're going to have to do something before they do it. Beat them to the gate. It's competition. And I hear all the time, why don't we have this in town? Why don't we have this commercial, commercial this? We always hear in the paper that this is coming, this is coming. It never materializes. I want to see it materialize. I hate to see our tax dollars going east. I want it to stay here. I want people to be able to stay out here, enjoy and be able to live too, at a reasonable rate. My daughter recently moved back here, much like Carson's, but we ended up buying a condo so, you know, so she could live in it and it's affordable. I think we need this. I think we need the commercial development, the competition and maybe it'll get some of these other people to kick it into gear, start developing some stuff. So, that's all I have to say, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Any other comments? For our citizens that were listening and we said we don't have any money, you know, the city just received a $44 million check. So, I want to make sure people understand that we have money for the 2015 projects, which are quite significant. And if you stick around for the rest of the meeting, you'll probably see us approve three contracts. That'll total roughly $18 million. So, we're going to have, for a city of our size, quite a few projects in 2015 that we're going to, and they're needed projects, that we're going to complete or get a good start on and then complete sometime in 2016. What it appears we don't have money for is to engineer projects that you would normally bid and start construction in 2016. So we'll have to be quite conservative on that. But we do have monies to do a fairly significant public infrastructure program during 2015. So I don't think I have anything else that I would comment on right now. Mr. Coleen or Mr. Kessel, do you have anything you would like to comment on?
Mr. President, just one comment, I guess, as you consider your motions and your votes on this matter. We are missing a commissioner, so you do have an even number of commissioners on this commission as well, just like we had at the Planning and Zoning Commission when this matter was first considered. Motions carry, if they are passed, by a majority of those present and entitled to vote. Majority in this case would be three of you. In the event that a motion does not receive three votes, either for or against the matter, it could be brought back at the next commission meeting as well. But it would take three votes in order to pass a motion at this meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Coleen. Anybody else? Okay, now, just, Mr. Coleen, I'll try to be a wannabe attorney here, but just so everybody understands, this is an ordinance. It would have to pass first reading to come back as second reading. If it passes first reading, we generally, at the next meeting, two weeks from now, act on second reading. Because, but if it passes first reading, there's no guarantee that'll pass second reading.
That's correct, Mr. President.
Okay. And? This is ordinance 1573?
Correct.
All right, I'm on a roll. So I'm going to ask, if there's no other comments right now, is there a motion regarding ordinance, the first reading of ordinance 1573?
Mr. President, before I make the motion, I want to clarify. If I make a motion to approve the ordinance at this first reading, obviously, I think we need to reach some agreements with the developers. Is that something that I put in this motion at this time? Or do we just approve the motion as it is and then in the next two weeks, agree to meet with the developers with some contingencies?
I don't think you need to go into any detail. If the, say, your motion is to approve 1573 and it passes, I think there's a general understanding that there would be a fairly stringent developers agreement that would be drafted by Mr. Coleen. And he would also probably give consideration to placing some of the items right in the ordinance itself. It's not uncommon, if we pass first reading of an ordinance, that when we get to second reading, you know, that there are language changes. And so, I don't think you have to direct him to do that in the motion, but if it does pass, then through the course of conversation, we can give them guidance on how we would like to see second reading presented. How'd I do, Mr. Coleen?
You are on a roll, Mr. President.
I am, three in a row, all right.
I should, just to add to that, I think we will give consideration to some of the, if the motion passes here or the ordinance passes first reading, we'll give some consideration to the sorts of timelines and deadlines that the commission would like to see as well as the developer may be able to commit to and bring those back for a second reading in, at the next commission meeting. There will be more detail to come in a development agreement and I, just knowing how long it usually takes to put negotiations together and put a document together, I doubt we would have that development agreement ready for you at the next commission meeting. But certainly we'll take whatever guidance the commission is able to provide, get together with the developer and begin crafting that agreement and have it to you at the earliest possible moment.
The other thing, I'd remind you that there still has to be a subdivision plat approved. And usually, it's during that subdivision plat process that the development agreement is developed and the detail is put on it so that there's more to do.
Mr. President, does Mr. Carson have to stipulate, are we just approving Phase One or the complete? Both complete, right?
As it's presently written, the zoning changes are for the entire 280 acres.
Mr. President?
Mr. Carson?
There's no other questions amongst the board members? I've moved to approve the first reading of ordinance number 1573.
Okay, we have a motion to approve first reading 1573. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any other discussion? Not, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
No.
The chair votes aye, but I'm going to make some comments about that. That doesn't necessarily mean I favor the project. I have the same concerns that Mr. Jackson has, but I do believe that a matter of this importance should be voted on by the entire commission. So, this advances it to that point where the entire commission will get a chance to consider it. And also, I think Mr. Coleen has the opportunity to come up with at least a draft of a development agreement. I understand Mr. Jackson's, or his statement about the process that this goes through, but I think in this case, it would be good at least to have a framework of that development agreement that there is a consensus on or maybe even an agreement on between the developer and the city so that that doesn't get lost later on in this process, if this goes forward.
And Mr. President, I can let you know that framework of a development agreement has been exchanged between Barron's Vista and the city. So, we're at least on stage one of that at this point.
Okay, so the motion did pass.
And I want to clarify one other thing, if I could.
Sure, Mr. Jackson.
I want you all to understand, if not everybody else, that my concerns have nothing to do with the fact that we have some deadbeat developers in town. Have nothing to do with that. It's simply my opinion of the inventory that we have. Has nothing to do with penalizing this developer because of some other developments that haven't borne fruit. It's simply looking at what we have in the house right now.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Any other comments? All right, well then, we'll, hopefully you can have all this done and all five commissioners will be here at the next meeting. And we can deal with it then. All right, so, we're going to go to our 5:30 timetable item and this is an issue regarding tobacco sales. Is there anyone from the city introducing this item? Okay, is Mr. Sheeler here? Okay, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. President, commissioners. Thanks for having me tonight. Using an analogy for tonight's agenda items, comparing them to my high school basketball coaching career, I feel like I'm playing the junior varsity game after the varsity game here. But I've got a small ball item compared to Barron's Vista for you. When I walked in tonight, Ms. Namnuck was sharing an update on city staffing levels and alluded briefly to the challenges that she sees in even receiving applications. And that's really the impetus of me being here tonight, representing myself at the hub convenience stores. And I do have the support of at least four other convenience store owners and operators throughout the city. And that's the, over the issue, where, the ruling in the city of Dickinson, where you have to be 18 years of age or older to sell a tobacco product. And for us in our industry, we're the prime retailer of tobacco products, though it is a declining category, declines year in and year out as other categories are growing. The fact that we have to be 18 to sell cigarettes really eliminates a large portion of the labor pool for us as retailers. Whereas, I believe the age should be 16. You know, I understand that the state of North Dakota, they don't have a regulation as far as how old you have to be to sell cigarettes or any other tobacco product, but they do give the freedom to every municipality to come up with their own rules. And the city of Dickinson is one of the few cities throughout the state of North Dakota that have actually done that. And I have no issue with trying to be different or trying to be progressive. You know, I think there's a lot to be said for that. Personally, I've made a career in business about, on being different and doing something that the other guy isn't doing. And most of the time, I think that's good. In this case, I think this is a case of being different is not awesome. I think it's counterproductive. Like I said, it eliminates a fair amount of great people from our labor pool. Convenience stores, I believe, in my opinion, are a great first job for a lot of high school students. And if they can't sell tobacco products, simply handing, scanning a product and handing it to a customer, they can't work in our stores and I think that's a shame because they can learn a lot of great life lessons from working in a convenience store. I don't see how a 17-year-old person, handing a person, a customer, a pack of cigarettes, promotes underage tobacco use. I don't see the purpose of restricting this to 18. Therefore, I'm asking a consideration to change that to possibly 16 or 17, if not eliminating it altogether. You know, the North Dakota century code, it does restrict anybody under the age 18 from possessing a tobacco product. Well, by handing it from a rack to a customer, I don't see possession or ownership taking place. Therefore, I don't see how this would apply here and I don't think it serves a purpose.
Any, are there any comments or questions for Mr. Sheeler? You're requesting that we change our ordinance?
I am.
Mr. Kessel, you have a comment?
President Johnson, I have some comments, not necessarily questions. Maybe one question for Mr. Sheeler. You stated that people under the age of 18 can't work in your stores because of this. You stated that, that people under the age of 18 can't work in your stores because of this ordinance. Could they work in that, in your stores as long as they were somebody that was of age, that could hand the tobacco products to somebody else? I mean, you can employ technically somebody under the age of 18, they simply can't have the duty of selling tobacco products.
Correct. Fortunately for, for us, in one of our stores anyway, it's big enough where we have to have multiple people working at once. Therefore, if we're smart, which we generally are, we'll schedule somebody of age with somebody who's below age. So, if, if a customer wants a tobacco product, the person who's of age will grab it off the rack, scan it, and set it down, whereas the, the employee who's underage doesn't touch it. So, we have a way around that in, in some cases. But, you know, it does prevent us, say, from having two high school students working together at the same time, because it just logistically doesn't work. And it also doesn't speak for the smaller stores in our community who may have one person working at one time. It has to be somebody of age.
That was really my only question, but I, I do have additional comments if the commission would indulge.
Are there, so Mr. Sheeler doesn't have to stand there the whole time? Are there questions for Mr. Sheeler?
I, I have a question, and maybe you just asked it and I didn't quite get it. But are you worried about 17-year-olds selling to 17-year-olds?
No, I mean, anybody who works in our stores, and I'd say any other store in the community, regardless of their age, is subject to the same age verification expectations from their employer that anybody else has. I don't see why, what the connection or correlation is, and if there is one, enlighten me. But I just don't think one has to do with another.
Well, that's my question.
Yeah.
I'm asking if it would be more likely for...
Okay, well, if there are no other comments or questions, I would suggest you, you draft an ordinance with this change. But I would do it with the expectation that if it makes it by first reading, that there be, you know, a public hearing. I, I've gotta believe we're going to hear several people in the community come out and have a different opinion, you know. So, I would expect that if it makes it through first reading, there would be a public hearing, meeting at least one before it would go on to, you know, a second reading. I would anticipate, again, that this would be fairly controversial, and there's a fairly significant segment of the population that wouldn't view it the same way you're viewing it.
Sure. I'd appreciate the opportunity to get it to that point, though.
Is that okay to do it that way?
Certainly, and I'll reserve my comments for the, that meeting. I think Chief Dossinger, would you want to wait until that meeting as well?
So, you're sure you want to go down that path?
I am.
Okay. Do you have anything else first?
No, thank you, gentlemen.
Okay. That should be, we have it in ordinance right now that it's age 16, right?
Mr. President, right now, in, in ordinance, Section 250602O requires somebody to be 18 years old in order to sell tobacco products.
So, it's just one change to the ordinance from 18 to 16?
Well, the, the ordinance itself, it requires, it makes it a noncriminal offense for a minor to possess, sell, purchase, or attempt to purchase tobacco products. And I think our ordinance change would just be eliminating that word, "sell."
Sell.
It would still be an offense to possess tobacco, to use tobacco as a, as a minor. It would just be eliminating the "sell" portion.
This is why I don't write the ordinances, yeah.
You're on a roll, though.
I was. I didn't go full. Okay. Well, now, we're going to, we have no public safety reports, is that correct? So, we'll go to engineering. And Mr. Kubis, you have several items here, so we'll just let you introduce each one, and we'll go down the list.
I do, but did we have a G3 as an item to finish up?
Oh, you're right, I'm sorry. Under reports, there's a electrical franchisee service agreement. Mr. Coleen?
Mr. President, commissioners, this matter is just on the agenda to let you know about a dispute that the city is dealing with between our electric service providers. You may recall back in 2012, we did approve a service area agreement between Rough Rider Electric Cooperative and Montana Dakota Utilities that designated particular service areas that each utility would have within the City of Dickinson. That service area agreement designated most of the areas, or all of the areas in town at, at the time. We have since annexed additional areas into town, and those annexed areas were not designated in the service area agreement. So, there has developed a dispute between MDU and Rough Rider regarding who has the ability to service those areas. And in particular, we are dealing with the Cook Fifth Development on the west side of State Avenue, north of the Public Safety Center. The agreement itself requires the, the two parties to meet together and come to a resolution of the issue, really without the city's involvement. And that is the direction that we have given to both utilities, is to ask them to get together, come to a resolution, and let the city know how they are going to divide up their service areas. In the last week or so, we have been informed by both MDU and Rough Rider that they are having, I would say, difficulty coming to an agreement. Both entities want the ability to service the development, and it doesn't look like they're going to be able to come to an agreement on their own regarding their service areas. There are other communities in North Dakota that have dealt with similar situations. There was a situation in, in Bismarck, a dispute between MDU and Capital Electric Cooperative. So, we have made contact with officials in Bismarck to see how their city resolved the issue. And they indicated to us, they dealt with the same situation that we're dealing with now, wanting the utilities to, to come to a resolution. But ultimately, that dispute in Bismarck did go to litigation, and they fought it out in court over who had the ability to service a particular development. It is becoming an issue for us, because this is a newly developing area. The, the developer wants to sell lots within the development, but is not really able to do so until there is some assurance of electric service in that area. So, it is one of those factors that is limiting the pace at which we can develop R1 lots. So, it is on the agenda for your information, and maybe something that we will be dealing with in the future, but wanted to make sure you were aware of it now.
Thank you, Mr. Coleen. Are there questions for Mr. Coleen?
Mr. Coleen, did you, did you explain why the developer has a preference for one utility over the other?
Yes, the developer, Cook Property Investments, Cook McCormick Property in, in Cook Fifth, originally made contact with Rough Rider Electric to provide electric service up there. Rough Rider had provided electric service to Cook, 1 through 4. But when Cook Fifth was developing, Rough Rider Electric made a request that the developer provide an aid in construction payment for the development of that, what, 160 acres or so of Cook Fifth? The aid in construction payment, I believe, was right around $500,000, maybe a little bit less than that. And obviously, the, the developer doesn't want to assume the cost of that aid in construction payment. The information we have received is that MDU is willing to extend electric service out into that area without an aid in construction payment. And so, that's where the developer has, would have a preference that, that MDU provide the service rather than paying the aid in construction for Rough Rider.
This really is a significant thing for us, because that particular development and its subsequent phases is probably gonna be our biggest source of R1 lots, or one of the two or three biggest source of R1 lots.
Other comments or questions? All right, well, I'm sure you'll keep us informed of how this is unfolding. Okay, now we'll go down to engineering. Mr. Kubis?
Thank you, Mr. President, commissioners. My first three items here are consideration to approve awards for contracts that have been bid out here in the last three weeks or so. The first one is for 40th Street. This is 40th Street East, the, the Street and Storm Improvements. A total of six bids were received and opened on February 26th. The bids have been tabulated and reviewed. Northern Improvement Company of Dickinson is the low bidder in the amount of $4,910,000. Excuse me, $4,910,149.20. Staff recommends awarding the contract to Northern Improvement Dickinson.
When you do these, would you give the engineer's estimate too, for the public's knowledge?
Certainly. Again, the, the low bid was $4,910,149.20. The engineer's estimate was $4,909,000, $909,000, $909,594.75. So, they were within just a few hundred dollars.
Okay, so, the issue before us is whether or not we want to approve the award then, in this case, to Northern Improvement for this project.
I'll move we approve the 40th Street bid to Northern Improvement.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, then we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. Now, I can't remember if it's Item B or Item C, but one of these recommended contractors is going to be Knife River. That's a subsidiary of MDU. So, when we get to that one, I have to abstain, and I'll turn the meeting over to Mr. Jackson.
And, Mr. President, that is the next item, Item B, the water, sewer, street, and storm improvements for State Avenue.
Okay, and then, Mr. Jackson will conduct this part of the meeting.
Go ahead, Mr. Kubis.
For the State Avenue project, a total of five bids were received and opened on March 2nd. The bids have been tabulated and reviewed. And Knife River Corporation Northwest is the low bidder in the amount of $7,669,795.35. The engineer's estimate for that project was $7,637,738.40. Staff recommends awarding the contract to Knife River Northwest.
Any questions for Mr. Kubis? If not, we need a motion to approve that bid award.
Move to approve award. I'll second.
Any more discussion? Not, we will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Mr. Johnson abstains, motion carries. Mr. Johnson?
You can continue.
Okay, moving on to Item C, is the consideration to approve the award for the 21st Street project with water, sewer, and storm sewer improvements. Uh, excuse me, water, sewer, street, and storm sewer improvements. Again, a total of five bids were received and opened on March 6th. The bids have been tabulated and reviewed. And Northern Improvement Company Dickinson is the low bidder in the amount of $5,389,929.23. The engineer's estimate for the 21st Street project was $6,236,222.60. Staff recommends awarding the contract to Northern Improvement Dickinson.
Thank you, Mr. Kubis. Any comments or questions for him? Not? Is there a motion regarding this award?
Move to approve Northern Improvement, and I'll second.
We have the motion and the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion carries.
The next item I have is a North Dakota Cost Participation and Maintenance Agreement for the State Avenue Railroad Bridge. The DOT has sent us that CPM agreement for your review and approval. The total cost participation to the city is estimated at $2,343,000. Burlington Northern Santa Fe Railroad is also involved in the project, and they have another agreement with the DOT, similar to, to our agreement with the DOT. And, and their responsibility is, for the project, is estimated at 5% of construction, which, with, based on current estimates, is $1,076,000. Of that 1 million, or, excuse me, of our $2.3 million, that includes the $1 million that Burlington Northern is, is going to participate in the project at their 5% level. The DOT policy is though that Burlington Northern contribution to any project goes to the local government entity, and then, we're kind of a pass-through to the DOT. And I can't explain the, the reasonings for the policy, but in rough numbers, our cost participation for the project will be $1.2 million, which we understood, we had water and sewer relocation costs that we knew we were going to have to assume. Those are about $900,000. And then, there was some aesthetic upgrades that we've requested of the DOT, and they pay for a portion of those. The city's portion is about $350,000. So, that's our, that's our $1.2 million, and then Burlington Northern has another $1.05 million, so it's about the, the, the $2.3 million, just so you have a breakdown of that.
So, the $1.2 is what we expected to spend to begin with, but this just makes it more complicated.
It, it makes it more complicated. For some reason, we have to be the pass-through on that.
Okay, so, we're not spending any more than what we originally anticipated here?
No.
No. So, we have an agreement here, either to approve or disapprove. You've heard Mr. Kubis's explanation. Are there other questions or comments for him?
Mr. President?
Mr. Steiner?
Move to approve the agreement? I'll second.
We have the motion, the second. Is there any other discussion? Now, Mr. Kubis, so the total project for the State Avenue overpasses 38 million bucks?
Actually, the, the last cost estimate that was provided by the DOT's consultant put the construction costs only closer to $21 million. That's where the, the 5% comes out to $1,076,000.
But isn't the roadway and the bridge a separate cost? Or am I looking at, is he, total estimate of construction cost, 22.2, and then 16.9? Am I, what am I looking at here? What page are you on? It's on this estimate right here. Where they break it down, 22.2 and... It's one of those pages with all the line item numbers.
22.2 is the total, Carson. The numbers to the right are the breakdown of that 22.2.
So, it's 21, 22 million dollars is what their, their estimate is. They won't know until it's bid, of course.
Right, and, and these, these cost participation amounts are based on the latest and greatest estimate, of course, that can fluctuate through the bid and through the construction of the project.
Okay, did we get a motion on this?
Yep.
Yes.
We did, okay. Other discussion? There's no other discussion, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion carries.
Item E, again, is a Cost Participation and Maintenance Agreement for an interim traffic signal improvement project on the south ramp of Exit 61. That's the Highway 22, I-94 interchange. There's been some discussions about bigger projects and interim projects with adding lanes. The DOT, as they studied this, felt that the, obviously, the, the south ramp on that exit is, has been a difficulty for many, many years. And so, they've put together a set of plans that would add signals at Exit 61. As the, the cost participation and maintenance agreement is before you, it's a maintenance-only with a zero cost participation to the city. So, we would have the maintenance responsibilities on the, the lights, as is typical with all the lights on Highway 22.
Okay, you've heard Mr. Kubis's explanation. Any comments or questions? So, would there be a motion regarding this agreement?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion to approve and the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries.
Item F is a task order for Apex Engineering Group to design the Lamont Stormwater Detention Pond. At our last meeting, Scott Schneider with the Apex Group was here to discuss the Lamont Pond and a couple other sewer projects in that same area. This task order would engage Apex Engineering Group to complete the design and construction engineering for the regional stormwater pond on Dickinson Park and Rec property, to upsize the storm sewer trunk main on First Avenue East and install storm sewer on 14th Street East from Sims to First Avenue East. The task order is for $215,300, and city staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Mr. Kubus. Again, you've heard his explanation, his recommendation. Any comments or questions? Is there a motion regarding this item?
I'll move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to reports. A few meetings ago, we had discussed the 2015 Mill and Overlay project. I believe in your packet, there was a map, and what we've done, we've refined the areas that we discussed at that meeting, narrowed them down really to right-size the project with our anticipated budget. And so this project will include asphalt work on approximately 20 blocks in the Hart River School neighborhood. It'll also mill and overlay Museum Drive east of Sims to 10th Avenue East and 14th Street East. We are proposing signing and striping improvements on 21st Street, 15th Street, State Avenue, 12th Street West and 10th Avenue East. And you can see those on the maps in your packet, areas that we're looking at doing signing and striping improvements. And just for the public's benefit and for yours as well, commissioners, those signing and striping improvements were something we had talked about probably late last summer, and a lot of those would involve striping these sections as three-lane roadways with a continuous or dedicated left turn lane in the middle. It'll remove some parking off the sides of these roads. A lot of these are designated thoroughfares, arterials or major collectors that really haven't had to function like arterials or major collectors until recently. On most of these collectors and arterials, we haven't posted no parking signs or haven't implemented no parking zones. But in most cases, there's minimal parking that's occurring on these major thoroughfares. So before it gets any more congested, the plan will be to implement no parking on these corridors and dedicate left turn lanes, so. If there's any questions on the scope of the project, the size of the project, right now, we're just refining some budgetary numbers on this project based on the bids we've just received on the three projects that were currently awarded. I think our estimate's going to come down a little bit, but right now, we're well within what we've budgeted for the 2015 street projects.
President Johnson?
Yes. One thing that I would like to add, one of the streets that we had originally looked at for Mill and Overlay was Ninth Street East. Looking again this summer and of course this spring on the condition of the street, we don't feel it's a Mill and Overlay project, it'll have to be a reconstruction project. One of the reasons I brought that up today, I just drove on it this morning, and it's, you know, blowing up all over the place. So I just wanted to, that we did look at it, it didn't get Mill and overlaid, it will be a reconstruction, so it won't be part of this project.
That's the street I was just going to ask you about. So we don't have enough money to do it now?
Well, it was, we dropped it from the Mill and Overlay project. I think we need to look at, you know, put a whole new base or reconstruction of first, at least those first three blocks. You know, I guess we'll, we can look and see what other, we don't have it in our plan this year.
If we don't have the money, we don't have the money. But, boy, it sure needs it.
A similar situation might be Museum Drive. Most people that drive it would say Sims to Highway 22 is in worse condition than Sims to 10th Avenue East, and they'd be correct. Again, we're looking at that portion in worse condition as being a reconstruct project that is in our 2016 Urban Roads program, understanding that it's maybe already past the level of what we typically repair in a Mill and Overlay project.
Okay. Here's what I think you should do, and Mr. Kessel, you need to listen to this. Okay, because it goes back to my earlier question on the financial statements and the street fund. So, you know, the street fund showed at that point like $3.4 million in arrears. You said there's an accounting issue there, and you're going to look at that. We also have the 50% share of sales tax money that we haven't budgeted the entire amount of that to the street fund. We've held some of that back, and I don't recall just how much is held back. But if you can verify what the real balance in the street fund is on 1231, and if it's not a negative 3.4, something else is going to be, you know, a negative, or we have another capital expenditure project that we have to add to our list. But if you can get the correct number there, and we can look at how much money we're holding back in the street fund. We allocated or budgeted some of that for 2015, but it's not 100% of it. We also, you know, have new monies coming into that. If you know what it would cost to reconstruct Ninth Street or have a pretty good idea, and for that matter, the rest of Museum Drive, you can take a look at that and come back to us with a proposal, you know, to amend the budget and use more of that street money.
And one thing we did is, on this Mill and Overlay, we did hopefully plan to use the 50% of the 1%.
So you already think you're going to use the whole thing?
Well, we had projected, I think, on our street projects, I think we were hoping for $4 million, which would include the Mill and Overlay and the curb gutter sidewalk, SID.
We've already budgeted the transfer from that 50% fund to the street fund for 2015. Are you assuming we would budget even more to cover this project?
To cover Ninth Street?
No, to cover.
To just cover what is in this?
What you're calling the Mill and Overlay project.
Well, no.
Well, originally, in our, in our street projects budget, we had, my understanding is we had $4 million over for the street projects in 2015.
Well, the problem is because of our lack of finance staff, we don't really know.
Well, yeah, current balance, but what we used is that we would, our approximate 50% of the 1%, we had projected that we would have the $4 million without any arrears for Mill and Overlay and the projects we budgeted for, not knowing what was in the fund from the previous year.
At the end of 2014, we have nearly $4.9 million in that fund. What I don't recall is what we budgeted for 2015 to transfer from that fund into the street fund. And what I'm confused about now, and I think maybe we're all confused about, is, you know, if there was an assumption that we would take some of this existing cash balance and apply it to this project, or if the transfer, the actual budgeted amount, covers your entire street plan for 2015, which is also going to include, oh, I'm having a senior moment, but chipping over, chip, chipping seal chips. Are we doing a seal chip project this year?
No.
We did a big one last year, we're not doing one this year. Okay.
So what we had, Craig and I, or Mr. Kubus and I, in the Mill and Overlay project was just what was budgeted. We had not planned on.
You're sure? I think we should look at that. If, what I'm saying, I hope you're right. If that's the case, then we should have some extra money in this street fund that we can, we can look at some additional street projects. So for example, if Ninth Street East and the rest of Museum Drive are your next highest priorities, we ought to take a look, and there's no point in holding that money back and let these streets get worse.
Correct, and that's why we're looking at the 50% of the 1% projected and with finance, but we can sure go through it.
Okay, and if there is some way that you could do Ninth, you'd want to wait and bid them together, wouldn't you? I mean, get that answer as quick as you can, the financial answer.
Yep.
President Johnson, the number we budgeted was strictly a revenue projection for 2015. It didn't include a residual balance from '14 or a cash balance from '14.
Mr. Kessel, I am relatively confident we budgeted a fixed amount transfer of $2 million, $3 million, some number of that magnitude from the 50% fund to the street fund in 2015.
Yep. That's exactly what I'm suggesting, you know.
Yeah, but I mean, we did that. So the question is, did that transfer along with any other revenue that fund receives, is that covering everything that they've got? Or did they assume we would transfer more to cover this program?
And I'm suggesting that I don't believe we would anticipate more revenue coming in, that we've already budgeted that number, but we'll make sure.
Double check, because I think you'll find support here if we have additional monies that we take on these other projects.
We'll double check that number.
And I'm not being critical, you guys, I mean, we just don't have, haven't had the financial staff to, you know, give us the kind of budgeting process that we needed and the reporting process. We're flying a little bit blind here because of lack of financial reporting.
My last comment on the Mill and Overlay project, I just had the opportunity to meet with Apex today. Ninth might put a small wrinkle in it, but I don't think a major one at all, anticipating a beginning of May bid for this, early May bid. Again, we'll double check the budget, but it may be that, you know, soon after the April 6th meeting, we're going to want to take this to bid and want to make sure that we're all comfortable, staff and commission included, that the funds are there. And of course, it's based on projections of sales tax revenue even moving forward, so if we find out in mid-year that sales tax revenues aren't what we projected them to be, at that point, we have to step in and make a decision as staff, well, we need to eliminate this and this and this from the project to always keep it right-sized. This is kind of a, one that we budget with some dollars that we haven't collected yet almost, even though we may have the ability to do that if we're going to run into a shortfall. We can right-size the project even during construction, so.
The sales tax revenues at this point, the projections for 2015, if we've done this correctly, shouldn't impact your current work program, because we transferred a fixed amount out of there that would, would not drain the fund to zero. It would leave, I believe, a fairly significant cash balance there, even if sales tax collections aren't what we expect them to be. On the other hand, if you've already assumed, again, I'm repeating myself, that you're going to spend not only what we formally budgeted, but what you anticipated we would collect, then that's another issue, and that is the question. And I don't think anybody sitting at this table is 100% confident of either situation. Are you?
I guess not completely, because the budget book isn't finalized, and there were some discussions on the exact dollar that was transferred over.
But we passed, the budget, the budget book may not be printed, but the budget was finalized. There is a number in that budget.
That is correct.
So just check it out. We don't want to spend the same amount of money twice, and at the same time, there's no point carrying a large street balance if we have streets that are in need of work.
Agreed. Mr. President, if I could bring up something else, as long as we're talking about this. You know, we have so much street work to do in this town, and I'm talking about our old streets, I'm not talking about developing areas, and so little money to go around. I have always thought that this Mill and Overlay work that we do, which is good work, in commercial areas should perhaps be accompanied by special assessments for a portion of it. Residential areas, different deal. You know, I realize special assessments of streets takes, you know, protests and whatnot, but to try to leverage what we can do with streets, it seems reasonable to me, it seems fair to special assess 50% of the cost or some number. Are we interested in opening up that bag?
There is another alternative too, and that is we, we can transfer oil impact funds to the street fund. Because certainly, these streets have been impacted by oil, the big vehicles and just the amount of vehicles on them. It, and all, for example, a million dollars or $2 million from the oil impact funds to the street funds could make a huge difference on what we could do on some of these streets. They, you know, there isn't a whole lot of capital expenditure projects that we can do for $2 million and less. So I mean, that's an alternative too for us to look at.
Don't get me wrong, I don't want to push specials very far in this community, but we essentially have none. We essentially have none, and there's a point that I don't even know if that's, if we're being responsible. We have to have, we have to use specials as an appropriate tool on some of this work. And if it's not this Mill and Overlay, maybe it's something else. I don't know. You know, I know it would throw a real wrench into what we're trying to do this year. I understand that.
Other comments?
I don't think it's never, ever been a consideration that we wouldn't have to go to some special assessment, you know, over the years. We've talked about it, what direction guy wants to go, but.
Well, there are some of us, Carson, who are old enough that we remember the problems, you know, from 30 years ago, we got burned so bad. But we would be wrong to overreact to that forever in this community. It's just a financing tool.
If you'd like, we can put some information together on how other cities use special assessments, but it's a very common method, not only for maintenance, but for new construction as well.
I think it'd be appropriate to do that, perhaps have a public hearing or two, public meeting. And, you know, my idea of doing it only in commercial areas, maybe there's a better idea, I don't know.
There is another alternative. You're carrying a fairly large cash balance in your general fund, our general fund balance has been growing on us because you generally, we generally generated a few more revenue dollars than what we budgeted for, and you generally have underspent your expenses. So the general fund balance is growing. The cash balance at the end of 2014 was $10.7 million. We can transfer, and we've done this in the past, you can transfer money from the general fund to the street fund. We can transfer, and we've done this in the past, you can transfer money from the general fund to the street fund too. So again, you know, what we just need to do is have the budget for the street fund. The projects that you're doing in 2015, the revenues are pretty straightforward for that. If there are projects we're missing, there's some money in the general fund that we can probably move this way. Like I said, there's money in that 50% fund, and we can also look at our oil impact funds.
The one thing, by the way, just a detail note, but these low oil prices have affected the cost of paving in a good way.
Holy cow, Mr. Kuvis, your reports take a long time.
My memo was brief, I don't know.
I apologize for saying anything.
Well, it is a good segue to report number two, which was a proposal, I guess, that was presented to the city on the extension of 15th Street West and the potential for a special improvement district to finance that project. Again, in your packet was a letter from Roars Development with an attached map. We have met with them as staff and the map probably has changed a little bit. Again, this is in the infancy of this proposal. But what we had discussed with the developer is that essentially they would, if we would undertake a project as a city, I think it makes sense to get to 50th Avenue West, which is a section line road, it's shown on their plat. It's, half of it is dedicated to the plat in the north. Provides a good point of access and a good terminus for a project on 15th Street. So we have talked with them, I think they're still, the Roars Group now, putting together some numbers of a preliminary engineering report, some cost estimates based on work that they've done on 15th Street to the first half mile from the interim bypass out to, well, about a half mile. And so they're putting some costs together on that. And I thought before we and they get too far into this, again, we would bring it forward to commission to see if this is the right project and the right place for an SID. If it is, I guess the next step would be to create the district. They've proposed some property in the Westridge Second Development, in the Westridge, I call it the Hoffrey Plat property, that they feel would be benefited. That isn't shown on this map. I guess the question would be, is what property would be benefited to the north? Of course, property would be benefited, but we haven't got that far down the road yet. Just wanted to bring it forward to the commission to gauge your interest in an SID for this 15th Street project.
Are you looking for comments?
I'd be looking for comments, questions, suggestions.
Mr. President, I'll say a couple free things.
Please.
I really think there's a lot to think about here. Off the top, these would be specials that would really concern me because we would be specialing hayfields. So I think we really need to think about that. Secondly, even though we have a developer involved to the north, he may or may not own that property. So in essence, we may not be assessing the developer, we may be assessing the farmer. We don't know that. On the other hand, we need this R1 ground to be developed very badly because this is mostly R1 in this area. Now, I don't know if there's an alternative for access. I know Chief Seavock wants the two access points, and I think that's part of the reason for this. It's probably the biggest part of the reason for this. There is another alternative, I think, but I'm, and, you know, I know you guys have talked about this, but I think we need to talk about it and get better informed. And that is the idea of special assessments that are financed by the developer. Now, I don't know about the legality of that. I don't know when you start thinking about the mechanics of that, and specials being paid or unpaid and, you know, I haven't thought that through enough to really know how that would work. But again, off the top of my head, it seems like an interesting idea. And this may be just the kind of situation to explore that possibility. We also have to think about the precedent because we've said no specials on undeveloped land. Now we'll be doing it if we do this. So what about any other subdivision?
Anybody else?
I think we as staff would really like to hear a commission discussion on the private funding of special assessments. If there's comments.
You know, when oil was $80 and on the way to $100, it'd probably be easier for the city to say, you know, we'll take a risk and fund something like this. And assume you're going to get your money back. But when oil's been $100 and it's now down to $43, $44, it has a different risk condition to it, different risk environment. It's one thing if we're at 43 and we're going to rebound back to 80, 90, and 100 shortly. That's one thing. If we're at 43 and a year from now, we're still going to be 43, well, it's a whole different issue. So you'll have to get back to us, tell us what price oil will be 12 months from now.
Well, a couple other things to think about. If we don't build this street now and everything gets developed out there, we've got homes out there, then it probably will be ours to build through an urban roads project, through however you would finance that. It won't be the developer anymore once the lots are developed, are full of homes. And then the last thing is that all the lots out here have access by other streets that will be paid by the contractor. So it's not an issue of getting access to the lots, they'll have access.
Well, that's your feedback.
We'll take it.
I don't know that we as staff have engaged the developer in these discussions of developer-funded special improvement districts. I know we have with other developers. I think it's an intriguing funding scenario that really takes a lot of the risk off of the city. But again, in a condition of no repayment, you know, does property go back to the city? Does it go back to the developer? Those are a lot of issues that.
I can't get my arms around that. If the developer doesn't pay his own specials, where would that leave us?
That's why we have to look into it a little bit more and bring back a proposal.
Really, all we'd be doing is financing the developer, allowing the developer to finance it, using the city as a conduit.
When we discussed these originally, we said that the developer would not be able to get the land for non-payment. And the assumption was that they'd be assessing land that they didn't own. And we didn't want them to be able to use it as a way to gain control of land that was in their way, so to speak, or that the owner wouldn't sell. But we have to refine that, I think, a little bit.
The one other issue, even if we had all the financing questions answered, again, the property to the north, for a good portion of this anyway, was annexed, excluded from the plat, and so therefore, no right-of-way was dedicated. We have half of our right-of-way needs, that'd be, you know, one other hurdle that we'd have to work through, regardless of a funding situation on the project. If we wanted to move forward with this project, it's going to be something that we need to address. I guess if there's no other questions on the 15th Street SID proposal, move on to report number three, which is the 2015 sidewalk replacement program. A couple meetings ago, we passed a resolution to move forward with the sidewalk program, which is really a replacement program for our property owners and homeowners in town to utilize a city contract to repair damaged and broken pavement on their sidewalk, curb and gutter, and then they can put it on their specials. Through their petition, this isn't forced on any of the property owners. Right now, we've put this project out to bid, that's what I wanted to report on. Yesterday was the second advertisement. There'll be one more advertisement of the project next Sunday on the 22nd. And then we'll be opening bids for that sidewalk replacement project on March 26th. So hopefully shortly after that, we'll be awarding that sidewalk replacement program to a contractor here in town. And we're still working out some of the details about how we're going to put it out to the citizens to apply for the project. We've gotten interest already that we've heard from citizens. We're anticipating that we're going to have some pretty robust interest in it. And if we need to turn people away, we want to develop some criteria for that to select the worst pavement or the worst sidewalk and curb and gutter, or maybe it's just going to be on a first come, first served basis. But working through those, I guess, those details on the project right now. And then lastly, I have a winter shutdown restriction update. This winter was the third winter in a row that the city's put a winter shutdown for work on our right-of-way. We have allowed, I would say, quite a bit of work. Most of it has been boring underneath some of our roads. What we failed to do in the last two winters, though, was ever formally take those restrictions off. It's just springs happened and construction happened. So right now, we've kind of been putting the feelers out with contractors. Sounds like depending where you're at in town, a foot to two feet of frost. This was late last week. I imagine with the weekend that we've had, a little bit of rain today, that frost is going to come out of the ground really, really quickly. So right now, we're tentatively planning for those winter restrictions to be formally lifted, probably this Friday. Unless we have some major change in the long-term forecast, I would see next Monday being the official start to our construction season, so. With that, open to any questions you might have of the engineering department.
Thank you, Mr. Kuvis. Any other comments or questions? All right, we'll move on to Mr. Zurov for his project updates.
I only have a couple pages here, President Johnson.
That's fine.
Just a couple things I wanted to bring up. We did, Mr. Cole brought up the right-of-way and, or the easement for NDSU. And so we will be advertising the West Gravity Phase Two sewer project soon, as soon as that is reviewed by NDSU. So I just wanted to update the commission that that will be advertised soon and bid out probably within two or three weeks. And also, I wanted to let commission know that the next meeting, we'll do an update on lift station five and an update on where we're at with the reuse fill station. We have looked at some different sites for that. One of the booster station at the water reclamation facility will be completed in a couple of months. That will give us the capability of pumping basically all our wastewater, reused water through the pipeline. And so I'm trying to find a location and finalize that so we can get the fill station bid out and finish as soon as we can. That's all I have, President Johnson.
Not bad for two pages. Any questions for Mr. Zurov? Okay, there's nothing from planning, I see. So any commission reports?
Just one quick thing. I alluded to it earlier, but Mr. Millstone, Mr. Kuvis, Mr. Josephson have put quite a bit of effort in the last few weeks trying to come up with some kind of a lot inventory. It's a tough thing to do, it's moving target, you have to make assumptions, et cetera, et cetera. But I think it might be worthwhile asking them to do a little presentation for us at one of our next couple of meetings about this. So we, and nothing to do with barons, just for general information, so we have it. I think the same thing should be done, planning and zoning, just help us in our decision-making.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jackson. Anything else, my commissioners? Any public issues? Anyone from the public wish to address the commission?
Mr. President.
Mr. Cole.
If I may, I did provide you, each of you with a letter at your tables tonight, a copy of the letter I had given to Mr. Kessel earlier last week. And wanted to, I guess, announce publicly, I will be leaving the city. It has been a great time with the city. I appreciate the opportunity that you have given me and Mr. Kessel has given me to be city attorney for Dickinson. But did receive an offer from another company in North Dakota and have decided to accept that offer. So I will be leaving employment with the city at the end of April, I believe. It was a very difficult decision to make and remains a tough one. But I think ultimately, it was just a good decision for our family. And I just want to thank you for the opportunity you've given me to be a city attorney for Dickinson. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Cole. And I think we're all sad that you'll be leaving. You do a really great job as our city attorney and we're going to certainly miss you there. It's not good news when Mr. Kessel informed me that you'd taken another position. Mr. Kessel.
Thank you, President Johnson. I want to reserve comments for when the last commission day happens. But it was definitely not good news. Mr. Cole has done a wonderful job for the city of Dickinson.
No, I know you're already giving thought to where we go from here. I, you know, we're certainly in a different environment that we were in just a few months ago. So there probably won't be quite as much development work here for a while, once we get through this year. So, you know, I think you have some alternatives. One, of course, is we continue with a full-time city attorney. If we're successful with a deputy city administrator, I think you consider going back to where we retain a law firm and they provide us a city attorney. I think that's a possibility. I think also looking for an interim till you sort things out is a possibility. But I mean, I think you're going to have to come up with the plan that you're most comfortable with. And I know you're thinking about that already, so.
We are working on those alternatives. We'll bring them before you, before Mr. Cole departs.
Chief, do you have something there? Did I miss you on the agenda?
No, I'll be extremely brief and try to end this meeting on an upbeat note. Two items for you. The first thing is you have our year-end report book in front of you, 2014. I'll be presenting at the next city commissioner year-end report along with other staff. And I wanted to get it to you to have a chance to review and look through it for questions.
All right.
The other item I have for you is we're having our first annual police fireman's ball. It's going to be held on May 9th at the Grand Dakota Lodge. Starting at 5:30, we'll be having entertainment that the Blue Ribbon Band will be performing along with a prime rib meal. And it's kind of a partnership between the fire department and us. We figured that we're going to be sharing space in a building soon and we better start getting along in a social function. So invite all the members of the commission and the general public to join us for this. Tickets will be sold at the police department, they're available now. And if anybody's interested, you can contact Becky Hoff in our records division, and she'll inform you with the details.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else here? All right, well, then the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Still move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay, motion carries, we're adjourned.